Is she in there?
Ah, okay, we're ready to go. We're opening the planning board meeting for August 6th. And to anyone who's here in the audience, we have to remember that it is being recorded. So if you have anything to say, make sure that you remember that you're being recorded.
Video and audio.
Video and audio, right. So we have Ken Brown.
Oh, no, that's postponed to September. Mm-hmm.
Ooh.
And Lou Petrosi canceled his appointment.
Oh, okay. And Pinoces, that's at 7:45.
It's not about.
Although, no, it's not, no, it's only, it's only a request for modification. Okay. We can hear from Pinoces then. Who's representing Pinoces? Okay. Anyone who speaks, you have to identify yourself for the record.
Can you use a microphone?
You guys know the drill, you're right it was here.
No, it's for the cable TV, not for yelling.
Donna will let you know.
My name is Frank Kusak, Ten Margos Way in Norfolk. We are here tonight to request the board to give the final approval for modification to the Pinoces site plan as shown by the sketch that we presented a couple of weeks, a month or so ago. So we'd like formal approval for that site plan change.
Do we have a detailed plan on that?
Steve, can I give you a moment?
Sure.
When you were out at the last meeting, they came in, they presented all the data. The, Dave Sanderson was here. He reviewed.
Here's the sketch.
A lot of the different detail to it. And we recommended at that time that they come back now that they provided everything that we needed to make sure that the safety items and things like that were addressed. And correct me if I'm wrong, guys.
No, that's right.
But, and at that point, we explained to them that would vote on whether it's a major or minor modification and then the detail itself.
Yeah, I was, I went up there and I actually drove through it. Did anyone else try?
I have been to it.
I've done it.
Now, I found that to go faster than 20 or 25 miles an hour was virtually impossible. I can't understand, you guys were saying people are driving through there at 35. I don't see how they could possibly, it seems like a really unreasonable speed. Now, what speed did you end up going? Did you try going through it?
No, I didn't, I didn't go through at a high speed. No, I went through at 15 to 20 miles an hour, really. Not at a high speed, no.
Well, I was just seeing what the maximum I would push it would be.
Yeah, I understand, I didn't do that.
Steve, here's the problem, and I've been to it multiple times because I, actually I live right on Overly Road, which is a half mile up the road. So I regularly cut through there at a slow rate of speed. And quite honestly, I think that their concerns are fair because you wouldn't push it, Walter, myself, anyone in here that's concerned and already knowing what their angst is would never have pushed it. But guess what? They're dealing with delivery guys that, because of the tasking of satellites, which we cannot help you with, and we discussed already, and delivery guys, trades guys that are still building out the Villager River's Edge, they don't care. You know, we're part of the community, they do care. And I think that, you know, given the fact that it's truly private property, I don't see a downside to it on what they want to do here. I don't know if this is something that we should be discussing within the request for modification or not, but since you weren't here last week, just to bring you up to speed. My man's opinion.
Well, I was just wondering if it could be done in two stages, whether or not it could be posted at 15 miles per hour and just see if it works without the speed bumps. Would that be, would that be reasonable to do it in two stages?
Why don't you grab a mic, please? And again, it's not for us, it's for the TV.
Okay. We have gone through this now for a year and a half. There's almost two accidents, very close, one at 5:30 in the morning of a resident backing out of her driveway when she, when someone came over that hill and almost went into her. A man walking his dog living on Wildwood, same thing. When they come around that hill, and it's a blind, we actually gave you at one point some visuals of it, it's blind and they come over very quickly. Most of them do not stop at the stop sign. So we've done everything, we've talked to the residents there, we've talked to Mr. DePlacido. This is kind of like last resort. Mr. DePlacido suggested we do this, the fire chief suggested we do this.
Oh, do we have a comment from the fire chief? Do we have a?
No, we talked to him, though, we have. You guys suggested we do this, and this is our last resort before there is an accident.
Yeah, I think again, Steve, at the last meeting, they did put together a very thoughtful presentation. It was quite a bit of research and detail that they pulled together. And, you know, I think what they made very clear was that this isn't a public road, this is a private road that they are responsible for, and they're trying to do the responsible thing, and they really just want to ensure safety. It's really all about safety. And so, I mean, from my opinion, I think it's well thought out, they made a really great case, and they've done quite a bit of research. I don't see anything not to support what they're doing.
Just one other thing too, and I thank you. River's Edge in the last month started posting 20 mile an hour speed limits through River's Edge because they're having the same problem, and they don't have a hill that anyone's coming over.
Well, what was even more interesting about, they presented that at last meeting, was River's Edge never came to the board and presented their issues and asked for modification and did it in the thoughtful way that this group is doing. They just kind of put it up and it's there. So I think they're trying to do the right thing, and they're trying to get advice, and they're trying to get support, and rather than just slap up a sign like it's being done on other roads, they want to do it the right way. So I really do think they've been quite thoughtful about their approach.
Yeah. The only, the only reason I was having concerns, since I wasn't at that meeting, the only reason I was having concerns is because these speed bumps are a terror for plows and they get ripped up all the time and everything. Is there, is there a way of doing it where it's?
These are.
Yeah, these are removable.
Oh, these are portable ones? They're going to be removed for the wintertime or?
When, when we know that there's a storm coming, they will be removed.
And that's?
Ian, being a private way, that's your concern with your contractor.
Right, if they get ruined, they're, you own them.
The condo association hires them and things like that. I mean, I mean, complete agreement, Steve, you were at a disadvantage because you weren't here, but they not only did everything we asked, you know, they reached out, we had David in Tom's absence look at it and got feedback that way, and I don't see the downside to it, so.
No, I'm supportive of their approach, having listened to their homework that they've done, and I think they've come up with a decent solution. I would offer one thought, however. The slow speed bump sign, where you placed it is awful close to the speed bump. When you're moving at?
30 miles an hour.
15 miles an hour, you're moving at 22 feet a second, and you really need to, I think, bring that sign almost up to the border between River's Edge and Pinoces.
I agree. That was my next comment, too.
I'm going to let Frank do this because he's our engineer, and if you saw one of the pictures.
Well, I don't know about that.
And we stood way back to see at what point you needed to see that. So there was thought that went back.
And they did provide those pictures last night.
Yeah, I understand.
Right. It is only 20 feet, though. That's considered a car length. So putting that sign one car length from the speed bump is?
Unfortunately, though, you know, they're limited by, yeah, it's property line.
You can post them both on one pole, right? Yeah.
Well, Leo was.
We addressed that.
You don't want anything except a speed limit sign on a speed limit post.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It is a short distance.
Yeah.
But also the height.
Although the distance between the sign and the speed bump is 20 feet, you can still see the sign a substantial distance ahead.
The, the speed bump sign?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You have to look sight distance.
I mean, I don't know what that is.
No, I know, but, but you're obviously going to see it.
You're going to see the sign.
You don't see the stop sign at the, you know, when you're stopping.
You won't see the speed bump because it's three inches high. You'll see the sign, though, when you should be slowing down. I mean, I think they're constrained by the amount of land they have. If they can move it back somewhat, that's fine. This one, they're kind of stuck as to where it is because there's no more roadway, but.
Oh, yeah. But the concern is coming from, coming from the top down, right? It's not so much the, from going from?
Could we hear from Frank?
Well, also, no, wait, wait, let's clarify that. Because I'm under the understanding that a lot of your deliveries are being routed through Pinoces. So what we want to do is to re-educate the regular, I mean, because your FedEx, your UPS, you know, whatever delivery systems and things like that, they get used to a pain in the neck way to go. And if they have to hit a couple of speed bumps until they realize, let's go in, I think it's Wildwood, that'll, it's an education process. So it's not just coming this way, north, it's south, too. So.
It's still 16.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
The other thing, I'm going to let Frank talk about the distance. If we put both sides, the?
Microphone, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He answered you a higher power.
Okay. He keeps telling me I don't need a higher power. If we put both signs, being speed bump and 15 miles an hour on the both signs, what we feared was there would be a confusion to people saying you can go over the speed bumps at 15 miles an hour. That was the reason for the two.
I think Tom commented on that, and he's our engineer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Frank, Frank wanted to offer something.
Well, only what Barbara just said is that we thought it best to have the 15 mile an hour sign at the very beginning to notify folks that here on in, it's 15 miles an hour for the site. And then the speed bump sign that says, by the way, here's another item that you have to watch out for.
And you're coming from an area that has 20 mile an hour signs as well, right?
They, yeah, and to the best of my knowledge, Walter, that was not discussed with any of the, our group. That was something that they put in, good luck to them. We just think the 15 mile an hour is better. And, you know, quite frankly, from a realistic standpoint, we've all been exposed to 15 mile an hour, 20 mile an hour, so forth. And do we all watch that speedometer exactly and so forth? I think the point is that we felt 15 mile an hour was a reasonable number to state for the entire site. So there'll be a sign coming in from West, from Wildwood, and there'll be another one as you went to Margos from Holbrook Street.
The only thing that I have is that, you know, you've got it 15 feet from the property line. Is it possible to push it back just a little bit further?
It's not available.
No, 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 you're 15 feet from the property line.
Are you basing that on their diagram?
Yeah, yeah, basing it on this. It says 15 feet right here, so. I mean.
Is that a?
I just think, the more warning you have, the better, yeah. The more warning, the better. If you move one up 10 feet, you can move the other one up 10 feet.
Is it a visual occlusion to something? Is there a reason?
One of the problems we're going to, we're going to get into here is exactly where is that property line? And?
Well, that's why you're only going 10 feet, and you know.
Exactly, and so, quite frankly, I said.
Look at the pavement line, that's when you can tell you're going into another town.
And I said, quite frankly, we're going to make it 15 feet so that there's no danger of us impinging upon River's Edge.
All right, you're just being careful.
So it's going to be, it's going to be posted 15 on Margos Way, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're talking about posting it at the beginning of the development?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's here. It looks to me as though it's going that way.
We don't, we don't show the.
That's a barrier into that road.
We don't show the sign that would be going in at, at the beginning of Margos as you come in from Holbrook Street. But that would obviously be on there as well.
Yeah, you do, it's right here, you do.
I mean, on your.
On your diagram.
That's the other direction, though.
That's on this side.
Yeah, oh, okay. Well, I don't know, maybe, yeah, okay.
But this 15 mile an hour sign is facing the incoming traffic. This one, isn't that facing, it's on that side of the street?
This one is facing Holbrook, correct?
I believe.
Well. That one, no, that one would be facing Holbrook, yes, excuse me.
Right, and I think you already have a sign there, don't you?
No.
There's some type of sign there, I forget what it says.
This is a stop sign.
Okay.
At Holbrook.
But on your diagram, you're showing a 15 mile an hour sign, which, personally, I don't have a problem with.
No.
If you're going to slow them down once you're inside there.
Yeah.
Now, have we had a vote as to whether or not it's a minor modification?
No, we need to do that first.
That's what the purpose of today is.
No, and they made their formal request to Betsy, and that's why they're here tonight in your absence.
So we'd have to do both, vote for major, minor, and then vote off.
That's requirement, yes.
And then vote on the after.
Okay. So who wants to make a motion that it's a minor modification?
Okay, guys, one sec.
I'm going to move that we accept the site plan modifications.
No, no.
As a minor modification.
No, you have to do it separately.
Separately. To vote that it's a minor modification first.
Right, that what they have proposed.
No, no, that's the second part.
That's the second, yeah.
Oh, so you just vote it's a minor modification, that's it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Duly, duly proposed.
Oh, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Did you get a second on that?
Oh, did I get a second?
You certainly did, second.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there we go.
All right. Why don't you explain to the crowd in case there's others, Steve?
Okay, now, we have to decide whether or not what you've proposed is going to be approved as a minor modification. We just decided that it was going to be considered a minor modification. So.
It's regulated by Mass General Law, Chapter 40, we have to do it this way, so.
So is there a motion?
So I will move that the proposed site modifications to the Wildwood Road, Pinoces Condominium Association is accepted as a minor modification as proposed with the new speed signs and speed bumps.
Dated?
Dated July 26, 2013.
Okay, now, any other discussion?
Well, the mission's a made. We need a second, Steve.
Second, second here?
Right, yeah.
Take a week off, he loses it after 20 years.
Second, yeah. All right. Any other discussion?
Just that this incorporates the details previously provided, the signs and the speed bump and all, because they gave us photographs and catalogs and things like that.
Do we have a date on those, those details that they gave us?
It's not dated, but it was received in the office July 3rd.
Okay.
And as presented at the last meeting.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
If you want to make any changes to it, like if you want to adjust the distance of the signs or anything, it would be an easy request if you wanted to come back.
It just becomes part of the entire development legal document, so we have to cross the Ts, dot the Is, so, but we wish you luck with it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. You will appear, you can run.
I'm surprised Mike Kulusek's not here for this one, because he actually called me up before this hearing. But they're not coming in, are they? It's postponed.
Oh, they're, second line, huh, okay.
Let me check my pulse.
Yeah.
Are you showing me your pulse?
You're juicy.
I know.
We're going to have to check.
I checked myself before I came. Okay.
Steve, these are my mistakes.
It's 8:01. Well, yeah, I didn't notice that there were two lines, that's all. Okay, 8:01, we don't have anything until 8:01, so do we have any other, it's a public hearing, we can go through?
Not a public hearing, so you can leave it early.
Oh, what, the?
The A and R.
The A and R.
Oh, A and R, okay.
Wait, Betsy, are you saying that the, the Crown Castle is not a public hearing?
No, 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 that's not.
No, it was asked for a proposal.
It was asked for.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, actually, you need to vote to continue Crown Castle.
I'd like to make a motion to continue Crown Castle Meeting House Road, Plaguepole Cell Site, special permit request for continuance to August 21st.
27.
22nd, 27.
Well, you know what, actually Greg is right, we technically have to wait till 8:00.
That's right.
So.
We can move ahead.
Go back to it, jump to the segment 7. I withdraw that motion.
Review the ASBIL plan for 269 Dedham Street?
You can do seven, you can do seven more.
Yeah, the A and R plan.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
We're so rarely in front of ourselves as a group.
Usually, we're way behind time.
That's what's screwing us up tonight.
Yeah. Okay, who is here for 7 Sagamore Road?
Hi, George Smith. Michael Maloney. I'm a professional landscape surveyor. Oh, turn the microphone on.
Turn it on.
I'm the professional landscape surveyor, George Smith, and we designed a 33-foot wide right-of-way at the terminus of Sagamore Road, and I have the changes that I made to these plans that we submitted earlier. Would you like to see them?
Yeah.
One more.
Yeah, Tom and I will share, how's it? There we go.
This right-of-way is aligned with the gravel drive that exists?
Currently or in its modified state?
It's currently where the gravel drive exists. There was a recorded right-of-way, which, as you can see, goes through the existing building that was there. There was some changes made to that right-of-way for construction, but it never did get recorded from what I understand. So this is to record where the existing right-of-way is right now.
You're saying that this is a right-of-way?
Down here? The gravel road?
Yes, that's a, that's where the right-of-way is, yes.
This is a, a town-accepted right-of-way?
Well, you can see where the former location was going through the building.
Mm-hmm.
That was recorded. We also have one that the town, I believe, signed, I'm really not, I have a copy here, which moved it over, but the actual gravel drive is where I designed it.
What appeared to happen in?
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Michael Maloney. I represent a relocation company who actually has relocated the property owners, and so when the survey was done by the current purchasers who are here, their lawyer, they found out that the right-of-way was actually under the house. So there was, there was some type of an agreement in 1979 that were, between the developer and the town, that created a right-of-way that was referenced on a 1979 plan. And then it appears from the history that the lot was never developed until 1986, and then there was a plan that circulated with the building department that showed that the actual right-of-way had been moved, and then the house was built, and then that particular plan was never recorded. So it looked like, it looks like the intention was to get town approval, but that plan was never recorded. So what the, the mechanics of this exercise is, is survey was done, looked at exact, looked at where the existing road is, and then illustrated it for the town to allow it to be moved. The purpose of it, I'm not real sure why it was there in the first place, what its service is, what it leads to, but we thought that it would be easier just to move it on the record as opposed to asking the town to give it up.
Well, this is Gold Street.
It's a continuation, it would be a continuation of Gold Street.
Yeah. I guess, there's a few things going on with Gold Street right now with our wells and everything else, and, I don't know, I'm a little confused. Is there, is there a title issue here, Tom? Is this whole parcel part of the same?
It's all part of 7 Sagamore.
That did not change, as a matter of fact, where.
So Lot 69 reaches right across the gravel drive?
Yes.
The easement?
Okay. Because I don't, I don't think you've got frontage.
Well, it might be a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
No, this frontage, this frontage, for this lot on Sagamore.
Yeah, it's all of this.
This. Yeah, is that, is that enough frontage? It looks like about 100 feet.
Well, you got.
No, it's always the, you have the site, the minimums, frontages are right there, the melted.
I mean, 50 feet.
Right. We start all the way over at that drainage easement.
Right, all right, so you've got, yeah, you've got 41, 56, 48, 5.
49.
Yeah, all right.
I didn't change the configuration of the lot at all. That's the difference, is what was reported.
So.
Gold Street coming out here is Myrtle, out here at this end, okay.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, where we connect, that's the same as the recorded plan. That didn't change. What happened is this part of the alignment shifts away to match the existing gravel drive.
So there's no plans on trying to do something else over here, is that correct?
Just correcting what's on record for the actual easement because there's a plot plan that was never technically recorded. So what's recorded as the current easement goes through the house right now.
Correct. And then that presents a.
Marketability issue for the, for the would-be buyers, and that's how it got flushed out.
But no, there's nothing in the deed or anything that talks about the intent of that easement, with what its use is and purpose and?
I mean, that's, right, I mean, can you deliver a clear title on this?
We can, we can deliver a, we can, with the, with the recorded plan, yes.
Right, but I guess my, my only question is this, is, it's been a lot of talk about doing additional solar and everything else here from a maintenance standpoint. From a maintenance standpoint, was this easement going to be exercised and are they aware of it?
Is who aware of it?
DPW.
DPW.
Because if you figure, they're going to come out here, if they were ever going to service into here, they'd be going from?
That's why I'm curious if it says what the easement's purpose is for. But, I mean, either way, even if it did have that intent, this, what they're doing helps because it takes the easement away from the house. You can't utilize the easement in its current condition because it cuts right through the house.
And then the, the verbiage in the 79, there seemed to be a dispute from, between the developer and the town, and there was lots of different cart paths and things of that nature. The actual settlement of the easement to be in the first recorded place it was, was as a result of the agreement between the town and the developer. It didn't, from my recollection, it didn't talk about what that easement would be, or that right-of-way would be used for, but that agreement is on record.
Okay, is this, is this registered land?
It is not.
Okay. So.
But it didn't say the purpose, but the, the easement is in favor of the town, is the town's easement?
Correct, correct. And then the verbiage, you know, from my recollection is, you know, the, the standard, you know, for the normal use of what a right-of-way would be used for by the town.
And you're not changing any of the verbiage?
No, the agreement is, you know, the, the title history's pretty simple. 79, the agreement was done, the plan was recorded, then the house was built in 86, and there hasn't been anything, you know. and there hasn't been anything, you know, since. I believe that the current owner has been there for some time.
Now, you guys don't have... see any problem with this, or do you?
I'm not sure that I'm competent to advise.
Well, we have to have the DPW look at it because it's their easement.
Legal issues, but I guess you're... fundamentally, the road works better where it is than going through the house. So I think you're protecting the town's rights because you're giving them a possible... according to the original intent. I don't know whether it would be good to have somebody on the town's side say this is okay, like Jack Hathaway's administrator or something like that. I see why you called it a right-of-way because the existing easement or whatever is called a right-of-way. But right-of-way is a bad word to use in terms of land use because it seems like it's creating frontage, and you've got to have setbacks from rights away and...
It's more of an access road.
I know, and I understand why you used it because that's what the old one said.
And you could say, "I have two lots on this right."
Yeah.
Well, we could just call it an easement.
Yeah, you could change that to easement.
Yeah, that would be fine. It really is in that gravel.
But it should be called, actually.
It hasn't been easement.
It's not a right-of-way.
If you called it a right-of-way and access easement, that probably removes that issue. So I guess the only other concern...
Why not just call it access easement?
Well, just be... I guess you could. The old one was called a right-of-way, but I guess we don't care, so.
Well, we do have to have it looked at by other people other than us. I mean, the... This is... this is obviously for the DPW to access the wells and things like that, although they usually went from the other side, right?
But, I mean, and they've never exercised. Obviously, they haven't been driving through this house on a regular basis.
Right.
And obviously, you're doing a great job cleaning up the title. However, it's their access, and I think it's prudent upon us to make sure that Bob doesn't...
Make sure they have a comment on it, yeah.
Right.
So we'll do that. We'll have our town administrator and our DPW director take a look at this and see if they have any issues with it.
I have one other question. Gino provided some comments, and your last comment was about this eighty-one X plan. Can you explain that, Gino?
Well, there's no property... there's no changes in property boundaries, so eighty-one X is... a land surveyor can file a plan.
Would that come through our board as well?
No, that wouldn't come through our board.
So if you don't like the fact that you have to wait around for us to go through this process, it might be another avenue for you?
Yeah, we just felt that we presented to the board.
Because A and R, we don't vote anyway, right?
You vote.
Yeah, we just wait, and it's good.
If you'd rather we didn't need one X, certainly.
Well, it's really your choice.
I don't think... I mean, I don't think there's any opposition on this board. I think everyone kind of thinks it's reasonable to do it. We just want to make sure that we...
Right.
That the...
I mean, Mr. Maloney, I'll tell you something right now. Bob McGee's a great guy to work with, and I'm sure he'd be easy to digest it very quickly.
I mean, my thoughts would be to leave it on this track, and then I'll comment with buyer's attorney tomorrow. I would suspect that the buyers would be more secure in the purchase of the property, knowing that it went through the planning board as opposed to A and R with no approval. But I'll, you know, leave that up to him. What kind of a timetable would we be looking at?
Well, we'd probably be ready to go at our next meeting. I mean, we just have to wait to hear back from them.
Okay.
We have a next scheduled meeting on August twenty-seventh.
Yeah, so it's three weeks from today.
Okay.
Does that impinge on your closing?
You know, I represent the seller, so, you know, I would have the buyer's counsel weigh in on that. Buyers are here. I wouldn't be comfortable with, you know, talking to someone represented. If the buyers would like to address the board, that's understandable.
No, they're going to... we like to hear from everybody. If you have a comment, we'd love to hear from you.
But you don't have to.
I'm Pat Avlin. My husband and I were planning to buy this property. We have been out of our former home for six weeks now. Our clothes, everything we own is in storage, that's why I'm here like this. You assured us that we would have clearance tonight.
Unfortunately, proceedings mean they go this way, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. The seller's attorney assured my attorney that there would be closure on this this evening.
Did you guys get this in advance?
I'm not comfortable.
We didn't get this.
I did, yes.
Yeah, you did. Oh, that's right.
Buying this property without a clear title, a very clear title.
Which is exactly what we're trying to...
We want to make sure that it's all clear before...
We're imposing on my son, my husband, myself, my daughter, my dog. It's not a good situation.
Well, let me ask other board members. We do have to get some... we could come in for the sole purpose of voting on this and signing it. If anyone's agreeable to come in on any given night, maybe next week or something like that.
Or if we hear back.
Or we could approve it contingent upon...
Continue, that's a better way to go.
In that way, we can just drop in as...
And sign as we can.
At convenience.
Oh, we can approve and not sign.
Subject to no negative comments from the DPW.
Yeah. We can approve it, but we will not sign it until we hear everything back.
I also want to talk to my attorney before I agree with any of this. I just want you to know how I feel about it, and I'm most disappointed.
Your anger is misdirected.
That's beyond the... You know, we're going to try to get this plan through. I think, obviously, based on what you're showing here, it works to the benefit of the town of moving this entire easement and cleaning up the title, I guess. So let's keep the focus on the end game.
And we only have to hear back from two people, and this should be really... unless there's a major issue that...
That we're missing.
That isn't obvious to us.
No, it isn't obvious to us.
I would change the name to access easement.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Right, right-of-way implies it's a roadway. If you are a surveyor. All right, so does anyone want to make a motion to...
It was Peter's idea, wasn't it?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the... What do we call this plan? The A and R plan of land of Seven Sagamore Road in Oakwood dated August 5th, 2013. To approve, the plan is presented with the new access easement, subject to no conflicting comments from the DPW or town administrator.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So it's been approved. We just have to wait to hear back from the other two people that are involved in this.
And we'll be told by email, and then we'll come in and sign.
Just follow up with Betsy.
Oh, it's after...
That's eight oh one.
Well, that was eight oh one.
Oh, okay.
Nine Shire Drive doesn't start till eight thirty.
No, I'm talking about Crown Castle.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, the Crown Castle one, right. The Crown Castle one.
Well, that's August twenty... oh, we have to continue that.
Yes, there you go.
Okay.
So I'm going to move, I'm going to try this time, to continue the public hearing for Crown Castle Meeting House Road Flag Pole Cell Site to August 27th at... do we have anything else?
Don't.
Actually, we may have voting for an associate member as our first order of business, so can we say eight o'clock on this one? That's to be brought up.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
Do you have anything yet, Betsy?
I don't believe so.
So seven forty-five. How does that sound?
Oh, second half motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we can skip Nine Shire.
Now, we can head out to review the 269 Dedham Street as-built.
Can we do the pre-submit... pre-submission review? Are they not here yet? One oh six Main Street?
No.
Because it's part of the public hearing?
No, it's not part of the public hearing. That's my point.
But can we do it?
I think it would be better if you presented it all at once.
As part of it.
Because that's the reason why I sent it out.
You wanted it as part of...
But I think it would be better for the crowd.
Gotcha.
What about... I see that it's... Pondville Plaza.
Can I review that?
Yep, okay. Pondville Plaza. Do we have a site plan?
Draft site plan and...
You have a draft decision?
Okay. Is it?
Sorry, she sent it out the last minute at home.
Last minute, yeah, I saw that some... I got something, but I left early today.
I know I don't have the stormwater sign, the sign special permit.
Leaving early.
I know there was one.
Do you see it in hand?
No, I don't.
Betsy, do we have a copy of the draft decision here?
Yes, you do. It's way down towards the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Choice of law.
At the bottom.
There was issues with the DRT about landscaping.
Oh.
They had a meeting last night. I don't know how it came out. Bob's here, so obviously there's something going on.
Yes, special permit not considered.
Now, did you guys have come to some sort of agreement with the landscaping on this one?
We met with the applicant on July 22nd, and we came up with some agreements on changes, which I saw in electronic copy today. The issues here were, yes, we did come up with a... what we consider to be an acceptable, and in fact, a good building image decision. And the design review board also was told at that meeting, and I saw a plan of it in electronic format today that allowed the landscaping to provide the intended purpose by number one, creating a level surface for landscaping to occur instead of the landscaping being on a steep hill away from the parking lot. And we did... the economic... the design review board then did put together a draft recommendation based on that information that I can leave for you tonight. We think it falls in line with everything of our meeting on the 22nd. It's just that hard copy of that document, to my knowledge, has not arrived except in electronic format.
So that was landscaping comments. You had also made some design comments as well?
The design comments were shown to us on July 22nd. We have hard copies of that in which they provided. With the documents there, a building that had a dormer. Then the owner, Al Quiglier, or the representative, asked to add, and we agreed to, a cupola. And they changed the second floor material from a cement product to a clavbered product. And all of that we saw on the 22nd and agreed to on the 22nd. I have a copy of our decision based on that information, and our assumption that the electronic copy was interpreted correctly.
Is the address really Zero Valley Street?
No, it's actually going to be a Pine Street address.
Oh, yeah.
Could I address the board? Is...
Okay, did you have something to add to this?
Yes, Steve. The building's 22,000 square feet. I thought it was more in line with 18,000 that changed. So I saw that on the first page. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Is that something that got in there?
Maybe. I thought I got that off the plan, but...
All right, all right, that's questionable. Okay.
Steve, we can get to it, but there's a question on waiver number 11. We'll have to resolve.
Do you want to just go through these things?
Yeah, yeah, let's just go right through it from the beginning.
Okay.
So if anyone has a comment, I should go through this. Or have you already gone all the way through it?
No, I was making my way. That's as far as I've done. We can go through together.
I'm just checking the details that are written into these things, because sometimes I get things end up in there. Yeah, there's another place where it has 22,000 square feet.
Yeah, on the second page. Third one, too.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, third one. I found that one, too, okay.
Do you know it doesn't appear to be... this hasn't changed since the revised edition sent out earlier today?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I mean, Betsy added like dates and, you know, it's been...
I understand, no, no.
But no substantive changes, no.
Okay, thank you. I have no license. I read it earlier.
Did you? This concrete block retaining wall, where is that on the site? Do you happen to remember?
Several places.
Yeah, several places.
On the driveway on the right side, left side at the air conditioning units. I believe in the back, behind the second story in the back, there was even maybe...
I think the largest one, though, primarily if you're looking...
On the driveway on the right side.
It was on the driveway on the right side separating it from the...
What's that?
Want to grab a copy of the site plan?
Only if they don't remember. I remember the driveway. I remember exactly where it is. Only if they don't remember, I, I remember the driveway, I remember exactly where it is that they're talking about. Right, it was all the billing code. What were you looking at for a, a design for the, for the concrete block? Is it something with a finish on it, or?
Uh, yeah, it's a split face. And then when we are natural, we're gonna put a stone face on some of it.
Oh, okay.
That, you can see from the road, it's gonna be stone faced.
Uh, would that be similar to like Rocco, or?
Yeah, similar.
Number 10. The, now, did you discuss that at the, the last hearing, number 10?
The driveway slope?
Yeah, the driveway slope. Is it supposed to level towards the bottom?
Yeah, we did talk about it.
Yeah.
There was a, there was a.
Lowering the grade at the beginning, just coming off Pine, kind of flattened out, and then it went up.
Oh, they did, they, it was lowered?
I can't, was it lowered at the four, and then it goes to eight, or, if my numbers are correct?
They said if the road going to the upper parking lot is an eight percent grade.
Right.
Originally, the, the plan had it at about six and a half percent from the street up to the upper level area.
Sloped right down to the street, yeah.
It was revised to come in off of Pine Street at about four percent, till you get to the entrance for the lower parking, then it goes to six percent to where you go by the parking on the right-hand side. And then it goes up to eight percent to meet the grade up near the, for the second level.
I think at that time, we had a, um, a corresponding discussion that, um, we figured the distance in from the actual roadway of 115 would be, um, at least three car lengths.
Oh.
So we felt, you know, and that was based on what our requirements.
Down the hill, they'll slow down a little bit. All right. I'm at 11, anybody else at 11?
Yep.
Okay. What was that about, number 11?
I just saw that there were two options that were either granting or denying, I didn't know if, uh.
I was confused by that too, Gino, were you not, was this the meeting you were in at?
I, I was not here, I was, I did watch the tape of it, or the recording of it. And I heard the discussion of the, of the pedestrian length, but I just wasn't a hundred percent sure, so I put in both options.
Where would we be linking to?
Well, potential, um, future development south of there.
There, I think there are residences on both sides.
Yeah.
Well, well, on one side, oh, that's right, there is residences on both sides, yeah.
There are residences on both sides.
And I can see the pedestrian, which would be consistent with what we've allowed other. Yeah. This would be a good location for a, a cross easement for the adjacent properties. I can't see the frontage road going in in this location.
Steve, we build it.
I know. I was wondering if you were gonna pick that up.
But, but.
Take your pulse again, Steve.
I'm having a flashback, yeah.
Yeah. What was that, Gino?
On that point, there's, I have not drafted a decision, but there is also a request for a special permit not to require the linked parking, which is still on the books.
Oh. Oh, there is a request for not having to construct a linked park?
Yeah, but again, what would you link it to?
Yeah, there's, well, even if things are built there, it doesn't seem as though there's gonna be an issue of parking, because the, the two properties on either side are pretty small, aren't they? I can't imagine anything. Al, for the record, you know what the size of those properties?
At a low level than this is proposed at.
Well, there's one on the north, and there's one on the west, right, in terms of adjacent.
East, right? Oh, north.
North and west.
Oh, that's right.
East, northeast.
Yeah.
The one on the corner of Hill Street and Valley, is, there's a huge elevation change.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be practical, and the one to the, if you're looking at Pondville Plaza to the right, that's a, a 30,000 square foot house lot.
So I think we could grant it, but I don't know if the reason would be because we're creating, because we're creating pedestrian lengths. I think we would grant the waiver because the adjacent properties are privately owned residential properties and at elevation changes which would not really be conducive to cross easements. I don't know if others agree with that.
Well, mentioning the fact that they're residential isn't important, because this is a business district.
And it's zoned. Is it zoned, commercial there too? Okay.
So it has to be that, it would, it would be very difficult to link them, and I think it would be really difficult to link them on these sites.
Right, because of just this topograph condition.
That's not to.
Yeah, I can see the topo.
But that's not to say that, that we couldn't also expect pedestrian, um.
Yeah, we should be able to expect pedestrian.
Yes, linkage.
In the future.
In the future, as a development, right.
And, and that's what we proposed, that was, uh, the same issue was between Rocco Plaza and the medical building, and we linked it with the pedestrian.
Sure.
And that was a good link.
Yep.
So, Gino, in the, it will say granted, but we want to make sure that we have the, we mentioned the fact that the, the grading would not allow the.
Race changes, vehicular connections, impractical.
All right, we had some conversation, number two, page four.
Number one, nor, normally that one is just a standard media ADA, but I noticed that there were, there was, uh, I don't remember if it was on the, on the recording, or it was in Tom's comments about ramps across the entrance driveway, through the, through the granite curbs. So I, since that had to do with handicapped accessibility, I added it to condition number one.
Now, is it, is that a split driveway?
No.
So therefore, we're dealing with one flat driveway issue then, aren't we? I mean, sidewalk. Are you talking about like cutting across like a, a roadway where the.
Yeah, the, where the, the radii come in, with granite curb, vertical granite curb along there.
But isn't there sidewalk there?
Currently, there is a sidewalk there, and we're, based on the grading, we're proposing to hold the back of the walk where it is, or within, within a couple tenths. So that the change of the walk that's existing basically will not change, except for the front of it will now pitch towards the street.
But it will be ADA compliant?
Yes. I mean, basically, I'm proposing to cut back the, uh, existing walkway around 12 to 15 feet on both sides of the driveway entrance, and grade it off at anywhere from, uh, twenty, one and 20 to one and 15 at the worst case, which is meets the ADA compliance of one and 12.
Well, that's what it says here, that the ramps will be added at both sides of the entrance driveway to provide an accessible path, that, that's what it says here. Okay. Good to clarify.
Are they ramps with true rails, or is it just, it's just a path? Because you're, you're less than the one and 12.
They just grade the sidewalk down.
Just the grade, the sidewalk's gonna be just tipped a little bit to meet the ADA compliance, to meet the new driveway coming in.
I mean, it's clearly defined what the grade has to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, because one and 12 would require handrails, right? So you're less than that.
No, no, not, not for the sidewalk ramp. You gotta be less than one and five, I believe.
You know what, it's also a building code issue as well, so.
Yeah, it's gotta be addressed.
Yes, be sure of it, that's all.
And even without the particulars, the general, the general condition that it has to meet ADA.
That's right.
And even without that, it has to meet ADA anyways.
Right, right. Good point.
Well, I, I do know the ADA compliance for a ramp at a curb cut is one and 12. And we're meeting that or exceeding that, you know, as a shallow slope.
Now, dumpster pickup, is there a reason why we have it limited to midday? I mean, it could be nighttime, right? What's that?
Yeah, at the last meeting, it was discussed that, uh, early morning, originally was designated for early morning and late afternoon, and they agreed to change it to midday to, at a lower traffic time.
It was just basically traffic interference when the highest use was.
Could it say midday or?
Or evening.
Or evening, nighttime?
I mean, do you want to just basically?
It's noisy at night, so.
Oh, that is true, there are still, there are still residents there, I guess midday is good.
Midday is low traffic, and people can tolerate the noise best, so.
Those guys like to wake you up, not when you're watching.
It's in nature.
To clarify that, um, I was, I was thinking when, in the revision, and when it said midday, would that be something like from 10:30 to 2:30, somewhere in that timeframe?
That's what I would think.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, they're just talking about the, the traffic in the morning and in the evening, because that roadway is terrible at the, at those commuting times. Reading conflicts with peak traffic hours on Route 115.
Can we, can we?
Yes, non-usage of the building itself.
Peak traffic hours are seven to nine, four to six typically, so.
Right, but.
Nine to four is.
As opposed to site usage versus street traffic.
And what was our intention, 115 or, or site usage?
I would have thought it was, it was 115.
115.
Okay.
I think we could cover both, I think if we close it from nine to four to more like 10 to 2:30, that kind of kills two birds with one stone. Maybe, although maybe the site will be very busy during that time, who knows? Depends on what's there. How about the question on the decibels, number 10? For the noise test? Gino, you had a question mark on that?
Um, I, I use 50, because I've seen 50 used in similar situations, so, the property line. But, um, I just throw it out there, if, if anyone thinks it should be different.
Well, do, did we set a decimal level right across the street for the car wash as well?
Um, I think we did, I think we did, that's right. I don't remember what that was, but.
And isn't there anything in there?
There used to be.
Is actually, there is, there is.
Actually be concerned about.
Always.
But if you have it in there, that it's above 50, you gotta test it. That's probably a reason, all you're telling them right here is test it.
I remember reading them, I forget. For the air conditioning unit, right.
So for that reason, I think 50's okay. I don't think we should limit it to 50, but once it gets above 50, we probably wanna put a microphone out there and find what it is. It's probably okay for testing purposes.
Well, how loud is 50? You've gotta know.
With that decibel level?
Yes, I'd like to see if you could.
I think like a lawnmower supposedly, 70.
That's the first thing I was gonna guess.
Lawnmower is what, 70?
Yeah, it's. But it's a logarithmic scale, so.
53 is double.
70 isn't, yeah, so.
Quite a jump.
You know, I, I think the maximum HUD derived thing, or FHWA, one or the other, is, is like 65 decibels for a residential.
Before you would need like hearing protection or something.
So.
Well, if we've already specified something for the car wash, and we've made that reasonable, we probably oughta reference that and use the same number.
I should know, but is there a level in the zoning bylaw?
That's what I was.
Let's do a reference.
She's scrolling.
Gino, I bet, I think there is.
Is there?
Yeah, just minimize the vacuum minutes to be located at the front of the site. Down, comply with section F10, C2.
That would be better, if we could reference a bylaw versus a number. That way if it changes.
They're fishing for them, for the second, and C2. Yeah, it doesn't go by decibels. Oh, oh, yes it does, yes it does. Sound pressure level decibels re, 0.0002 dimes per square centimeter. Yeah, whatever.
What's that, Gino, how loud is that?
And it's all, it's related to the frequency band, cycles per second. There's different decibel levels based on the cycles per second. Well, it's somewhere between 28 and 6.9. I, this, I don't understand this chart.
I remember we had a conversation about this many years ago.
How it does not exceed the bylaw, or whatever the number it was.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
F10? Yeah, but we wanna, we, we wanna put something in here so that we can say, okay, you have to put a little more landscaping buffer or something in there.
Yeah, well, to Tom's point, if it exceeds 50, then that's when you say, put more, more.
Yeah.
That leaves it simple.
I'm buying 50.
Yeah, yeah. Because I know that the air conditioning out here is really low.
You see Al out there with his decibel meter saying, you guys got it at this here. You don't have shrubs in front of yours. Getting to know you how.
Yeah, just surround it.
That's right, that's all you're asking for. Fair treatment.
That's all right.
Keep in mind that the bus depot next door, from Pondville Plaza, only repair cars.
All right.
Pumped noises under the engine.
And then, general conditions.
Our general.
Oh, almost. But are they correct? Trusting, Gino. Oh, I wouldn't do that, I've seen, I've seen.
I know, I wouldn't either.
Project in there.
He's testing us. He's keeping us sharp.
So your work, 7 a.m.?
Mm-hmm.
That's about 7. I know it's always, I know it's always discussed, so.
I knew what time they start.
No.
Well, they're putting a big addition on the house across the street from me, and 7 o'clock, they start.
That is a big addition, sorry, yes, the other day when I was driving by.
They don't start the equipment earlier, do they?
No.
Knock me down here.
Do we wanna wait until we get everything in, all the hard copies of things, before we vote on this? Why? The changes for the DRB and everything? Are there any contested changes?
No, the, just that the documents from our meeting arrived electronically about today, so the hard copies haven't been meshed. We've come to an agreement, and that's why I gave you the letter.
Right, the notes.
But I haven't seen the documents except in electronic form.
I mean, consistent with what we've done in the past, is accept a contingent on acceptable documentation received by DRB, if that's okay with the applicant. In that way, we can just move it forward. Yeah, all right. I just don't wanna run out of construction time if somebody wants to move forward.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Because we have to wait 20 days?
There's, uh, there's no disagreement, so.
Right, but. We're not gonna be signing it until our next meeting anyway.
One less vote, one less.
Yeah, all right. So, does anyone wanna make a motion? False as a.
Well, let's see. What is this called?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve, uh, decision number 2013, 2013 dash 06. For. Property. With the appropriate edits made this evening for the property at X Pine Street. What's the number? Do we know what the number is?
As listed at zero.
Don't know off the top of my head, I do have a number though.
Do these fellows know?
Well, you can say, or, zero Valley Street, which is subject to change.
Zero Valley Street, subject to. Zero Valley Street, subject to change of an address on Pine Street.
Contingent upon.
Oh, yeah, contingent upon accept, receiving documentation backing up the DRB and applicant decisions.
Well, additional information from the DRB and the applicant. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. We have Neinshire Drive.
Is there water on it? Yeah, there is.
Just pass the signature page for that decision.
What's that?
It's like the signature page for the decision. Gino and I'll make those changes.
Okay, you'll have to identify yourself for the public.
Actually, please to open the public here.
Oh, that's right.
Well, I got public here, I gotta find it and thank you. Here we go, is this the one for, what are we doing?
This is Neinshire.
Neinshire Drive.
Drive. Actually, I have the right one, I think.
Nope. Wrong one. This is the one, yeah, this is the one here, right?
It is.
Yes, okay. Are you ready, sir?
Absolutely.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw, Section F11, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August 6, 2013, at 8:30 PM in Room 124 of the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, relative to a site plan application for a property located at Neinshire Drive in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, WFM Enterprises LLC of Millis, Massachusetts, is proposing construction of a new two-story office building and car storage area with a protrain utilities. The property is located in the C1 zoning district, reference Assessors Map 18 block, 69 lots 1-9 and 41-7. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
Okay, are we ready?
Yep. My name is Evan Wilmarth. I own the Dover-Lance Vayne Company. I was hired by my client, who is present here, to develop plans for developing two lots up on Shire Drive, which we've called.
Turn the board so the camera can.
I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay, I'm sorry, okay. Thank you.
Develop the property for a car storage and transport facility. The recent town meeting, the, this area of the town was recently rezoned specifically to allow this sort of use to be constructed. Currently, right now, the lot is basically stripped barren. There is a existing drainage quality, water quality swell off the back of this property, which runs around three other lots and goes out and meets the street. The front of the lot is fairly level. There's quite a bit of ledge exposed out in the front, and then it just drops off into a hollow. The lot has basically been used during the construction of this subdivision for what appears to be staging area of storage of materials and debris. What we're proposing, well, actually, currently right now, because there's two lots, each lot was built with its own access, basically centered towards the middle of the properties, and each lot also had its own two-inch water line, a six-inch water line, and then there's a combined underground electric and utility in the middle of, between the two lots. What we're proposing is put in a building, it's approximately 45 by 85 feet. The back half of the first floor is going to be a automotive garage area for maintenance on the tractor trailers that are used to transport the cars. The front half is going to be office and storage area. And then the second floor only takes up about less than half of the, of the footprint of the building, and that's going to be additional storage and office units.
Is it like a mezzanine setup?
Um, not, not.
So is the entire building, two stories, and this portion just overlooks the bays of the other, or is it just one pip?
It's, it's one story with a.
That pop-up?
With a pop-up in this, in this front section of the building. Because of the.
Pop-up, you stand all the way across the front of the?
Not, not completely all the way across. Goes about two, a little over two-thirds of the way across the front and halfway.
Back.
Down the width, so it splits.
Good elevation?
Um, no, not at the moment.
Just might help visualize it some.
Based on the size of the building and the uses, we didn't even break it down into, you know, the back half being car repair area. We just called it all office storage and used, and said roughly 80% of that is the floor area that's usable, and determined that we needed a little over 14 parking spaces to be provided for the building. What we did was provide 16 parking spaces out in the front of the building and the two sides, and included one handicap van accessible parking spot. The other thing we did is we relocated the two curb cuts going into the property out as far as we could towards the outside corners of the property, so as to give us the biggest turning radius possible, because these are going to be tractor trailers carrying cars, mainly going in and out and around the building. We're going to try and limit it to a one-way flow around the building in a counterclockwise manner. There will be a fence coming off the building on both sides out to the property line, and then the proposed car storage area in the back will be completely enclosed by a six-foot-high O-Peg chain link fence. As far as the layout of the parking, it's basically a conceptual idea of how the cars may be stored to show that we're less than the required 150-car maximum. Right now, we have, I believe it's 114 spaces. While the spaces do conform to the town's requirement of 9 by 19, the travel lanes in between are approximately 20 feet, because these cars, the cars that are going to be there are not going to be going in and out every day. You know, some are going to be stored there for several months, so we don't need the full two-way traffic aisle in between them. As far as the grading, as I said, the lot right now is basically flat, and then it drops down into a hollow because of the drainage issue we have in that this hollow goes onto this property, and then the grading goes back up. There's no way to grade, or no way to provide drainage out in the back to get to the already approved drainage basin that's down in, down the street about four lots. So what we've done is we've picked up the whole grain in the back of the property anywhere from 10 to 12 feet, and we're grading the whole thing down to a double catch basin, and then piping it out into the street, into the existing drainage that's there now.
But you're grading it with a, an easement on, on the adjacent property? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, we're doing. That's what we're proposing. The other thing is.
You've asked, you've acquired that easement?
Uh, we're working on it. The other thing is, on, that's for that, that half of the property. This half of the property will all grade out to the back into a storm septic, which will then drain into this water quality swell, which was designed presumably to handle all the runoff for this lot.
We have to use all off-site fill to fill in that?
Yep. As far as the utilities, it's fairly simple. It's just pick up the two-inch line and feed the water line and feed it into the building. The septic system is going to be coming out of the building into a septic tank, pump chamber, and that's going to be connected directly into a four-inch force main that exists out in the street, which then runs down the street and out and back to the septic system, which is located on this lot out in the back, which handles the entire subdivision. There were stipulations concerning the gallonage, you know, maximum gallonage per lot that could be put into that septic system, and we are below that.
Sorry, what is the total square footage on the building?
It's under 5,000 square.
So what we're talking about is, what, 300 gallons per day or something like that?
Yeah, it's a total.
Because it's strictly office.
The building's total is, um, the first floor is 3,600, and the second story is 1,500, so you're looking at 51.
But the septic is 75 gallons per thousand on office, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're, I think the limit was 385 gallons per lot, and we're only dealing with, I think it's, works out to be 360 for the entire building. So. And again, you know, we tie it in the water, we're running the sewer into the existing force main, and we're picking up the existing underground electric and utilities and bringing it out and tying it into the building. Probably the transformer pad will be set behind the fence, so it'll be out of view from the public eye. As far as landscaping, there had, there is a few, not even that, trees out in the front. There are some out for, due to plantings on the property next door, but basically it's all barren out in the front. We're proposing putting street trees within the street layout, approximately about 30 feet apart, and then landscape, you know, with some trees and shrubs down the property line and in the islands, and along the front of the building to, you know, provide the landscaping there. The rest, the other issue is in the grading. Because we, of the grading, we have to cut back the existing tree line, which abuts the State of Massachusetts property, which is zone residential. We've kept the, uh, the required setback to the parking area, but because we're removing some trees, we're going to replant it with a double roll of arbovides and pines, which is basically what's there now, is white pines, and maybe a few maples.
Now, the, the landscaping requirements, that's zoning, right?
Yes, it's both really, but.
Yeah. So, the, in order for them not to plant within the, the parking lot itself, because they have to plant X number of trees for every X number of vehicles that are parked there, right?
Would that just be in the count of the parking required for the building, not the stored?
It doesn't, it doesn't differentiate. We've never had something like this.
Right, the uniqueness of it is, there's a three-foot planting strip, and I think it's one every eight feet or something like that.
One every 10, I believe one every 10 spaces you're supposed to have.
Okay.
A landscaped island.
It's eight, one per eight.
One per eight.
One per eight.
Okay.
So, that's, I think that, that's not something that's handled, that, that's zoning Board of Appeals, right?
Well, yes, I mean, it, it falls to the question of, is this a parking lot, or is it car storage, and is there a difference?
Yeah, I mean, because I can understand the reason for the aesthetics and things like that, because in a parking lot, because it's active and there's, there's people seeing it, but this is behind a fence, buried in an industrial park.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
I, I guess you need to get a determination, but zoning enforcement.
Right.
Yeah, well, when that was written, it certainly wasn't written with this in mind, you know?
No, no, it wasn't.
You gotta apply a little logic.
Hey, six months ago, this didn't exist.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, I, I just, I, I think you need to get a determination.
Yeah, you're going to have to speak to the building inspector about that, because he, he's going to have to determine whether or not you're going to have to comply with the, with the planting requirements are, and he may just say that you're going to have to go to zoning for it.
All right. As far as the lighting, we're proposing three lights, you know, overhead lights out along the front to illuminate the entrance and the front of the building and the parking areas, and then on the back of the building, there will be two elevated spotlights, which are adjustable, and those will shine to light up the car storage area to a point, and then we'll also have several additional overhead lights to fill in the spacing in the back. The other thing is, the entire back area is also going to be covered by surveillance cameras.
That was my next question, was.
For safety purposes, that's why we, we put the lights out here on the building, because that's probably where the cameras are going to be going to.
So it will be lit all night, right?
Um, probably either lit all night or sensor lights, one or the other. I don't know, it needs to be lit all night specifically, unless a sensor something.
I mean, given the fact that it's a fairly remote site, and I'm assuming that these cars are value.
Oh, yeah.
So therefore.
It's probably going to be lit all, all night is what we're planning.
Okay.
I just don't know what you guys are requiring.
Attractive nuisance, that's the problem. Right.
There are a lot of them, random cars.
Okay. Do you use dogs or anything like that?
No.
And then basically, the rest of the plan is just the detailed sheets.
Well, what kind of lights do you have? What kind of, what?
These are the same lights I've been using on the other projects, 15-foot high.
The box?
The box. You know, there's three out in the front, three in the back, and these are fairly high, you know, high stand.
High intensity?
High-intensity spotlights.
You said you're, I think I heard you right, you're filling in maybe 10 to 12 feet in the back area there?
Yes.
Are you sloping that down to the adjacent properties? Are you building retaining wall? How are you?
On this side, we're going to be sloping off onto the abutting property, which we.
Now, that slope is on your land?
Uh, no, some, some of it is on the adjacent property, which we've got to obtain an easement from.
That's what we were asking about the easement.
And the other side?
On this, on this side, we will be sloping on our property and then replanting.
How much of a slope is it?
Two to one, proposed, and we've asked for a waiver from the town reg on it.
All right, so. Can we get some comments from Gino?
Well, first of all, the, the use is special permit from ZDA, which they have applied for. He mentioned the transformers, two. He mentioned the parking, which was my comment number three. Number four, I didn't see any sign that's shown on the plan, other than the traffic control signs. Is there not going to be a building sign, or?
There, there is going to be a building sign and, and a, and a sign out in the front.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see those. They're not on there yet?
Not on there yet.
Okay. We talked about the landscaping requirement of the 40 square feet per foot of frontage. That might be able to be met just in the, between the. That might be able to be met just in the, between the front and that back area. Site plan rules, they asked for a waiver for the sidewalk across the front, but there's already a sidewalk across the front, so that makes sense. Granite curbs, they're putting granite curbs in the, in front of the building, but then Cape Cod berm in the back, which is typical in this area.
Actually, we're relocating the existing granite curb at the openings. Since once, once we get on the site, we're asking to use vertical concrete curb until we get behind the fence, and then we'd like to use Cape Cod berm.
That's a standard. That's a standard request.
I mean, it's behind the fence.
Behind the fence.
That's fine.
The question is more the vertical concrete curb in the front yard?
Other than that, they're, they're following the construction standards. Other than the curbing, they're following the construction standards of secondary streets. They've asked for a waiver on impact assessment and traffic study. And there weren't any building elevations or design features, I assume?
Correct. No building.
Okay. That's, that's all of my comments.
So you guys are going to be reviewing the landscaping and the building?
We did our first look and have one comment.
Oh.
There's no building.
The comment we have is that we would like the planning board to consider something more than chain-linked black vinyl fence facing Shire Drive.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not particularly fond of that vinyl fence with the slats in it either. It looks good for a couple of years, then it doesn't.
I believe it's written into the zoning bylaw that that's required.
A chain link? Slatted fence?
I believe...
I don't think so.
Three other sites have used a vertical system.
Right.
Which is much more attractive, you know, I'm just mentioning it.
I'm pretty sure the zoning, the new zoning did not specify chain link with vinyl slats.
I don't think zoning ever required it.
It just said a barrier, an opaque fence.
I do believe there was in zoning by law. The whole time, there was slotted, you know, it's...
Yeah, so the part facing the street would get something a little bit, a little bit better than that slotted chain link.
They have a fence around their dumpster, which would be perfectly fine, a stockade-looking type thing.
Tom?
Maybe the first substantive comment is number two. Just so the board is aware, they are creating a PMLD, which allows for higher coverage limits. But it's kind of the reverse of what we conventionally consider a PMLD. They're actually combining two lots to get the 80,000 square feet, and there is only one building, just so the board is aware of that, that does allow them to get the higher coverage limits desired for the project.
Actually, I think on that point, that the whole Shire development is a PMLD, and so they fall within it.
I think it was...
It's been a while, but that was my recollection.
I think it originally was set up as a PMLD because they put in their shared...
The shared septic and the shared drainage.
Right, and that's how they were able to...
Yes.
Right.
Comment number three, we pointed out some additional waivers that would be required that aren't listed on the drawings. Comment number four, there are certain conditions of approval from the Shire Industrial Park that typically have been added to the individual site plan. So we're suggesting they be added here, things like restrictions on construction hours. Comment number five, outdoor storage graded in 1,000 square feet requires special permit. Comment number six, an additional benchmark is required. Comment seven, the lot should be tied to a town, county, or state bound. Comment eight, building height should be added. Comment nine, 24-hour peak traffic volumes and assignments are required, although given the low nature of traffic generated by this project, that might be something the board might consider waiving. Comment 10, Gino mentioned, the transformer location should be shown. Comment number 12, the sign is not detailed in the drawing. 13, snow storage areas should be shown. 14 and 15 were a couple of misplaced notes, which should be deleted. Comment 16, this is the entrance signage, about no left turns. That has to do with restricting truck traffic through the adjacent residential area. It's a requirement for all lots in Shire.
Is that Sharon's app?
Sharon, I was trying to think of the name. I was drawing blank. Thank you. 17, the dimensions of the parking spaces should be shown. 18, parking in the front yard requiring a special permit. Comment number 19, loading area should be marked out on the site. Comment number 20, the vinyl fence, again, the only comment we had is that the fence extends across the entire lot, and there are no details provided of the gates, so the gate locking mechanisms. Comment 21, we suggested that because the back portion of the site is fenced off, that the details of that be approved by the police and fire officials in the town in terms of whether they have keys for the gates or whatever. Comment 22, WB-50 is indicated as the design vehicle. If the intent is that that vehicle's going to be dropping off these cars, it could be tight maneuvering, given the layout of the aisles and the relatively narrow width.
Tom, educate me. WB-50 is a standard car carrier?
They may be bigger than that, I'm not sure. The WB-50 is a standard over-the-road tractor-trailer. I don't exactly know the size of the car carrier units.
What do you...
65 to 75 feet.
Yeah. That's probably a WB-65. It's probably a little larger, but...
So they wouldn't be going down the reduced aisles?
No.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
So they're just looping in, offloading, and then you're parking.
Yeah, they just loop around...
And the cars are like just, you know, bulk parking. We park them all, so they're not even in spaces.
They're driven by one of the operators into that space. Is that, is that right? As opposed to being dropped into the space by the, by the vehicle?
Right. These are all operable cars?
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, it's like if you went to a dealership where they store their overflow car.
Yeah.
They just all kind of... Not specified.
23, site distance should be provided at the entrances. Don't think it's a problem, but it should be provided. 24, vertical granite curb in the front part of the site, bit berm in the rear, as we mentioned, that's commonly done in these types of sites. 25, the easement that Evan spoke of with respect to the fill that they're creating, doesn't accommodate a three-to-one slope with the given width, and also it should be labeled as a permanent, not a temporary easement, because the fill has to stay there. Guardrails should, 26, guardrails should be provided along that side of the site at the top of the slope. 27, there's one low point that's a bit of a drainage problem. That's where that permanent little island sticks out right at the fence there. It's just a matter of putting a spot grade at that location.
Can you point that?
He's talking about right...
Up, one, one up, right there, yeah.
Yeah, up and down.
29, stormwater calculations were not provided. They were done for the overall Shire Industrial Park, so they've requested a waiver for that. One possible exception to that, the whole site feeds into, most of the site, feeds into a single 24-inch line with a double great catch basin. It's got a pretty flat slope, so we'd like to see a calc on that one line, also in terms of whether the double great catch basin can handle the flow into it. But other than that, the waiver of the drainage calc should be, should be okay. Again, so the board is aware, and maybe Bob McGee might want to look at this. There's a fair portion of the site that drains out into Shire Drive in terms of adding flow to the gutter there. Comment 35, this may be something that the board wants to discuss. There's no roof water recharge facilities now. The other sites in Shire have been required to provide them, even though there is recharge provided in a central stormwater basin. The idea was to disperse the recharge of the roof water over the entire subdivision, so that's something the board may wish to consider.
Tom, can you go back to 34 again?
Yes.
You mentioned something about Bob McGee concerned about the flow.
Yes.
Is Shire designed to be a town roadway?
I believe it is.
It can be, as far as I know, yeah.
Not the drainage system, though.
I know, I know those are privately owned. I remember that.
The roadways could be accepted, sure.
Yeah, because it connects to Shire, I mean, to Sharon.
In, in one, okay. I just, when you mentioned Bob McGee, I just didn't know if this was a private road, like, you know?
I think we've talked about it before, and as far as I know, the roads could be accepted. That, that's actually the reason...
So were they designed to be accepted?
Yeah, because the, the septic system force mains are in easements under the road with the idea that...
Yeah, then you wouldn't have done that.
They were required to put them in easements because of that, yeah.
All right.
And finally, the rear, the second catch basin behind the building, and that should have a throat stone. Other than that, the landscape comments are just looking for some numbers and calculations on the construction details or sort of details.
Now, do you have a copy of these?
Yes, I got those yesterday.
All right. Does anybody have any questions, Walter? We'll start with...
Yeah, on number 19, Tom, when you talked about a loading zone for 400 square feet, are you talking about a designated area for offloading vehicles? Cars from, from the...
No, no. It's just a requirement of the zoning bylaw that a building of this size needs a loading space, so...
400 square feet for 10,000?
I think you mark it out somewhere.
Okay.
Oh, one more?
Do you ever move cars around in evening hours? Are you pretty much a daytime operation when the cars are...
Some are in evening hours.
What kind of activities would be, and you're gonna have to use the microphone, sorry, but what kind of activities might happen in the later hours?
There can be trucks that come in, you know, during the evening, dropping off and picking up cars. They're gonna have access to the gate, planting electric gates with codes so that they can go in behind the building and load and unload, and then leave at their leisure. Not many, not many trucks come in, you know, during the middle of the night, but, you know, definitely, you know, into the evening.
Traffic obviously determines if they're...
Yeah, I mean, traffic, as far as the trucks, just determine is, depending on the time of year. You know, in the winter time, we take snowbirds to Florida, so we're a lot busier, October through December. And we're very busy in the summer, July through September, probably, or June through September. Those are our probably eight, six or eight really busy months, when we have a lot more traffic than normal during the year. But they, they come and go, you know, pretty regularly. You know, there's no parking, backups, and things like that. It's pretty regulated by, by us.
Do you have any more, Michelle? Peter?
No, I mean, I've been following this on its first, so I'm pretty good on it.
Greg, do you have any comments?
No.
I just wanted to ask now, because there were a couple of comments on the transformer. Do you have a location for the transformer on here?
It was proposed to be just behind the fence in the landscape aisle.
Oh, oh, okay.
That way it won't be able to be seen from the street.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions tonight either, so...
Yeah, I got one more. Do, do you deliver when it's time to retrieve the vehicle and give it back to the owner?
Right.
Do you deliver, or do you expect them to come and, and pick it up? Or is it a mixed?
It's a mixed. They do, they do both, yeah. And there won't be, you know, there's no customers allowed in the back just because the parking, I mean, we don't allow that now, so we bring them out front for them and whatnot. We have a lot attendant.
So all customer interaction is outside the fence?
Correct.
Are you cleaning or detailing any cars on site before you might be heading back?
Generally, I mean, sometimes if there's a lot of dirt, we may rinse it off, but there's no, like, car wash or anything like that, no. We don't offer that. Maybe around the corner, we'll take them now.
Yeah, there'll be a place right, right nearby.
Right.
Is, are there any comments or questions from the public? If not, so we would like to continue this, right? How long do you need to go through with some of the comments from either the board or the consultants? The next meeting is August 27th. Would you be able to be ready by then? Oh, so do you want us to schedule to continue this till August 27th? So, do, do we have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to continue public hearing for, what do we call this?
August 27th?
Public hearing for nine, Shire Drive, WFM Enterprises Site Plan.
Yeah.
Until August 27th at?
We just did one for eight o'clock, so, or 7:45.
Crown Castle at 7:45, and then there are...
8:30?
8:15?
8:15.
Yeah, 8:15.
Yeah, 8:15. You may have to wait a little bit. We push them together in case someone cancels.
Evan's here all night tonight. I mean, he's, he's in for the long...
Okay.
Second?
All those, all those in favor?
Walter, Walter had a comment.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Bob.
Oh, Bob.
Did the RV wants to know when he will be able to see buildings going?
Could you respond to that?
I will, I'll be able to, I'm going to be, but probably Monday.
Okay. All right.
Motion's made, and...
Seconded.
Didn't I already say all those in favor? I did, I did. I already said it.
Then you stop.
Oh, okay. So what's the vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Take a rest, please.
Yep, yep.
I know one thing. This sure looks a lot better than those boxes on the plan, huh? Since I have a couple of minutes. I forgot to tell my wife that I was... She's staying at her mother's. She wanted me to call before I... Hey, since you drew the zoning map, is the MTA property in the... Hey, uh, since you drew the zoning map, is the MTA property in the, in the B one of our one, right on the line?
Yes.
I would say definitely. Hi there, I forgot to call you before I walked into my meeting, so I'm calling you now, but, I don't know, maybe you're in bed already. Bye.
Maybe she's watching you on TV. Make the phone call. Maybe she's watching you make the phone call.
No, she's not home, she's. But she stays with her once a week.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
Sure she appreciates that.
They have fun. Do you have vouchers? Maybe we want to give those to us early so that, uh.
I want just one.
Want me?
Sorry, you can pass it along, I just got one voucher.
Okay.
Where is he today? Oh, he had a work meeting. That's right, I remember him saying that. Which Legals is he at?
I'm with the Mayhem.
He's still there?
Problem with this is six hundred bucks to.
Sun Prana, this is, this is for posting meetings, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I signed it down here somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely. Get a drink before you head in.
Because it was, is it correct? Is Craig still, he's still associated with his?
Okay, so what's next up?
Uh, one oh eight Main Street, then one oh six one oh eight Main Street, then one oh six Main Street.
Okay.
You know what I forgot to ask, didn't we get a lot of, um, comments then on Al's development after we closed?
Well, I don't remember saying anything.
Yeah, no, there, there was a neighbor that.
Oh, I remember reading about that, that, that they were advised that it was closed.
Yeah, several things. And then they were just advised it's closed and, I'm not sure. Betsy, any feedback from that neighbor when you said that the public hearing had been closed for?
Pretty far off requests.
Ponville Plaza?
They sent their comments along, and I did tell them that the public hearing was closed, so.
They were notified?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. They were the first one.
Oh, they were?
They were. But you said, oh, I said, I wish you would.
Spoken up?
Yeah, spoken up at that time.
Never put off a tomorrow. What you can do today, isn't that a famous saying?
Round up Peter.
He's refused.
Oh, yeah, Peter's refusing himself, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, going to open the public hearing for one oh eight Main Street.
Ooh, gotta find the thing.
Site plan with Dover Land Surveying. Yep.
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Section forty A, and the Norfolk zoning bylaws, Section F eleven, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty thirteen, at nine PM in room one twenty-four at the Norfolk Town Hall, one Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, relative to a site plan application for property located at one oh eight Main Street in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, Mujib Ahmed of Mansfield, Massachusetts, is proposing construction of thirteen residential duplex houses with a detriment utilities. The applicant is also requesting a special permit to allow residential dwellings in the B one outside the business core district, see Sections one point seven point A point one of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, and a stormwater management permit. The property is located in the B one zoning district. Reference assessor's map, fourteen block, fifty-six lot seven. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
Okay, so who's presenting for this? Ah, okay. Do you guys want to move over a little bit, as you can see it?
I'm here on behalf of Michael, I'm Mr. Mujib Ahmed. Currently, this is a, a site plan application for a residential development. Um, it's actually part of a two-lot, uh, project that is going on, not only between the property of one oh eight, but also with the property of number one oh six Main Street. Um, we currently also have a subdivision, uh, definitive subdivision plan up in front of the board, which is coming up right after this hearing. What we are proposing is, currently there is a, uh, it's a one lot, it's about three point eight acres. Um, there currently is a pond out in the front, there's drainage swell and piping, um, out in front of the pond, there's an existing one-family house, uh, with a barn, a stable, and several out structures. The majority of the back area on the back is all corralled off and fenced off for sheep, goats, chickens, horses. Um, there's basically, from this point back, there's hardly any trees or landscaping, um, except for this one area off the back of the house where they have a garden. What we're proposing is, as part of the subdivision plan, is we're proposing a public road going in for the first four, approximately four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty feet. Our project is to develop off of this public road, a private road with a cul-de-sac at the end, and thirteen duplex units spread out around the property. Because it's in the B one business district, the setbacks, uh, are more than enough from the front property line, we only have to be at least forty feet. Um, but off of the sidelines and the rear lines, there is no sideline setback, and the rear property line setback's only ten feet. And we're maintaining fifty, approximately fifteen feet off the, this property line, where there's two residential houses, and we're ten feet off in the back up there, and more than enough off the sides. These two structures, because they're up against this new public road, will have to have a, uh, variance as far as the setback to the street, which is twenty-five, uh, but that setback, uh, reduction can be allowed by the planning board, and it does not have to be allowed by the zoning. As far as the grading, basically, the road's gonna be coming in right here, it's approximately at existing grade. Uh, the road will be going in, dipping a little, then going up and dipping again. Uh, there'll be a set of catch basins in, at the beginning, to serve an underground drainage structure under the roadway, then there'll be another set of basins out by the cul-de-sac, and there'll be another underground structure under the cul-de-sac. Um, as far as the grading, it's, the house structures were set by the Board Health Regulation stating that no foundation, cellar floor can, may be within two feet of, uh, estimated high groundwater, so based on the testing on the property, that set the foundation grades, which then set the roadway grades and the garage grades. So it ends up that while this follows the general contour, when we get out in the back, this whole area's gonna be raised up in, in a fill area. As far as the utilities, as I said, there'll be an underground structure for the drainage off these two catch basins, there'll be an underground structure to pick up the, the rest of the property. All the septic systems, there'll be individual systems up in the back. Each house, well, each building will have its own separate septic tank and its own leach line and reserve area. The electrical is gonna be coming up along the side of the roadway, then it'll be run down and tee off to supply all the houses. As far as the landscaping, uh, it's just, the proposed new road is to be tree, per the town regulations. So they were proposing trees in between every house, in the front, the shrubbery in between, filling the gaps between the houses.
Is there lighting?
Uh, yes, there is. I do not have a plant, a plant, there is a plant here. For the lighting, there is, proposed one overhead light at the intersection, where the road's gonna tee off to two projects, and then down at the cul-de-sac, there'll be two lights to light up the majority of the cul-de-sac. Otherwise, there's no street light proposed down the street itself. It's basically just lighting up the intersection of the cul-de-sac.
Now, would, wouldn't it be easier just to maintain it all the way as a private drive and not have to go for a variance for those houses?
Um, it's the wish of the, uh, two applicants, or actually, the applicant of the pub, public road, Mr. Chipman, that that road be, uh, set up as a public way.
Okay.
You mentioned that, uh, septic system leach fields are in the back?
Yes.
So that means that the houses on this side of the road, the far side of the road from the leach field, they have to go under the road to, to access that, is that right, Dan?
Each, each house will have its own septic tank, and because the, the size of the system, in that we've got thirteen duplexes, which is a combined, uh, twenty-six units, so we're dealing, uh, with, uh, fifty-two bedrooms, we're exceeding the, uh, two thousand gallons per day for us, uh, if it was a combined septic system. So each one of these tanks is not only a septic tank, but it's a combined pump chamber, and everything will go into the septic tanks, then be pumped up and pressured down through the septic system.
Through individual lines?
Through individual lines.
Under?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do we have for comments from Gina? We'll start with you.
You mentioned the setback issue, and that it gets waivable by, uh, the planning board. Now, I'm trying to remember, but, uh, in the, in the zoning book that I have, it says that it, that's waivable as part of a PMLD, but did the new zoning, and, do you recall if the new zoning passed it in May, eliminated the requirement that that be for PMLDs only?
Off the top.
I can check that, but I just, I thought you might have already known that, so I just raised that. Uh, comment number three, uh, there's a requirement for the pedestrian ways and street trees in accordance with subdivision regulations. Sidewalk is proposed on one side, street trees are provided, um, so, so it doesn't comply exactly with the, with the subdivision regulations. The sidewalk is right up against the driveway and such. Number four, the green belt is required abutting of residential district, and I had difficulty determining if.
I, I checked the zoning bylaws when I got your letter.
Uh-huh.
This afternoon, and based on the, um, definition, or the determination of where the zone, zone line occurs, if it runs, um, either along a street, along a railroad, or whatever, it is assumed to be the center line of the way or the railroad.
Center line, okay.
So the railroad right now is up, in this area is a sixty-foot wide, um, right away.
So the last thirty feet are?
So thirty feet of that.
Is, is in the B one, so you're not abutting a residential district, okay. Site plan rules require walkways along the frontage, they've asked for a waiver, their, the frontage on the existing public way already has a sidewalk, so, uh, that makes sense. Uh, there's a request for the, a waiver for this, regarding the setback distances for detention basins. There's a request to waive soil testing, seems to be a common request lately. Now, um, there's also a waiver requested for providing a maintenance and access easement for water courses. Uh, looking at that plan, it looked like the only water course was really a connection between the two ponds?
Currently, there's a, there's a pipe that comes from the pond next door and dumps into this wetland area, then it runs through an open ditch into another pipe that runs in to another open ditch, and there's an outfall from the pond into that ditch, and then it runs from that ditch through a twelve-inch pipe into this brook area, which then feeds into the pond out in front of, uh, number one oh six. So it's all interconnected drainage course, even two lots up from there.
It does, okay, thank you. There's a request for waiving the requirement for, uh, slope granite curbing. The detail sheet seems to indicate vertical, you're proposing vertical granite?
Actually, it's vertical concrete.
Vertical concrete, okay.
Yeah. On the subde, on the subdivision plan, we're proposing to relocate and install new vertical granite curb, which is what, currently what is in the street now. Um, and then once we get into the subdivision road, then we're proposing, uh, vertical concrete curbing, and then the entire site plan for this.
Vertical concrete.
Vertical concrete.
Okay, um, again, there's, there was no information on signage? Any signage proposed?
Um, there, basically, it was just gonna be the street signs.
Okay. And, uh, again, the, 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 um, construction standards for secondary streets is being proposed, other than the vertical, other than the granite curbing. And I had said that there were, again, no building elevations or design features, but I see some part of a building elevation included here.
Mr. Ahmed did bring with him this blow-up of what the proposed duplex will look like, um, looking for. like, looking from the street. It'll be, you know, two garage doors and then the entrance ways. And then, this is the layout of the first and second floors with the rooms and the bedrooms.
Okay, and that's been provided to the design review board?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. All right, that's all I had.
Tom?
Mr. Chairman, we have not been able to finalize our comments on any of the three Main Street projects.
Well, you may want to get these into the record by reference. We received something from Bob McGee, Director of Public Works. We see nine articles. You don't have to read the whole thing, just say that we got it.
Let me find it in the package here. Just for the record, we have received comments from Robert McGee, Director of Public Works, which will be part of this record. Do you want the others as well?
Well, this is, yeah, all of them should be in there. That includes a memo from environmental partners.
Yeah, including a memorandum from environmental partners written by Stephen C. Olson, PE. And a note from the Conservation Commission dated August 6th relative to 108 Main Street.
Right, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, not at this time.
Michelle, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm just glancing at the comments from environmental partners. And I'm assuming that when Bob McGee wrote us his memo saying he needed to hear from his water consultant, that's, is that their water consultant? That's he, is that Bob's water consultant, environmental partners?
Yep.
Okay, so she just came in late today. Have you seen these yet?
No.
Okay. Sounds like one of his concerns, he's particularly looking for feedback on, is the water main that's dead ending at, dead ending at the cul-de-sac. So for water circulation, hydrant flushing and issues like that. So I think that will be important to take a look at these and then address those, those I don't have anything else.
I guess, Evan, the same question. Have you seen the note from the Conservation Commission? It's a short one.
I'd say maybe like about 4:00.
Okay, so you got it, but you haven't had a chance to read it?
I really haven't digested the whole comment. I do know there was an issue, there's an issue concerning the existing 12-inch pipe.
Yep.
Which is going to be addressed.
Now, the, I know that you mentioned what was going in along the public way. Now, which side of that roadway is the sidewalk going to go on?
As you go, as you go in on the new public road, the sidewalk's going to be on the left-hand side.
Okay.
And then it will continue on the same side, going all the way out to, till you get to the end of the cul-de-sac.
No, Evan, those are showing, I believe, utility lines to the left of that. Is there any, I don't think, is there any slope issues on that left-hand side of the sidewalk?
On this left-hand side, we're basically coming down at a three-to-one slope. The grading, though, is within the proposed layout. It is not outside the layout.
So what you'd have to...
Due to the issues with the two ponds and the wetland areas there, we're asking, on the public road, the definitive subdivision, we're asking for a reduction in the roadway standards. So as we can fit a roadway through the two wetland areas.
Reduction in width?
Yeah, from 50 down to 40. It's going to be a standard 24-foot wide pavement. There will be a five-foot sidewalk, but there will be no three, three-foot wide grass berm. And the grading will then start on the outside of the sidewalk and the outside of the curbing on the other side.
So what would your detail be between your sidewalk and your curb? How much?
The sidewalk is going to be right up against the curb in the roadway.
Well, that only makes it 29 feet, though. What about the other 10 feet?
We're using that for grading.
My right. All right. Okay. It looks like there's a lot for us to chew on this, and there's a, there's another hearing for another part. So we will continue this, because there's a lot for us to review from comments that we've received. And I'm sure that there will be comments when everything gets tied together.
And we haven't heard from Tom yet either. And Bob has a question out there?
Right. Bob?
The design review board looked at the landscape plan, and our only comment was that we think there should be some consideration for landscaping between the two existing We think there should be some consideration for landscaping between the two existing properties that are on Main Street and the rear of the residential buildings that face it. There's nothing there shown on the landscape plan at this moment, no landscaping whatsoever.
Is there a requirement that there has to be a row of vegetation between those properties if they're both residential?
I'll have to look at it more closely, because there is if it's a commercial development. But where it's residential, I'm not sure that that applies or not, but I'll double-check on that.
Were you proposing a fence?
Not at, not at this time.
Okay.
So do you want to hold up on public comments until we see the next opening?
Well, if people want to make comments, they, we have to take comments as we move through them, so...
So we get it before we move on?
Yeah. So, does anyone want to make comments? Anyone in the public want to make comments on the presentation that we just received on 108 Main Street? Don't start to confuse the two, because there's a separate hearing for the other one. Okay. Please identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Peter Diamond from 114 Main Street. My property backs up to that. And did I understand them to say that those homes are only going to be 10 feet from the property line?
It's going to be 15.
It's going to be 15.
Isn't there a zoning bylaw that says that it should be 20, a building should be 25 foot from the line?
Not in this district.
Not in this district?
Right.
Because it's a B1 zoning district, not a residential zoning district.
Okay, you also asked about a fence. I would require a privacy fence at least eight foot high between that development and my property. If they're only going to be 15 a feet away, that's pretty close.
Well, I'm not sure. I think that eight feet, you'd have, you'd have trouble with requesting an eight-foot fence. I think the building department frowns upon eight-foot fences. But I don't, it, we can only require it if zoning says it's required between the properties. So we can look into these things.
And also, I think your, I think your comment is logical, and we can pass it along to the applicant for consideration as well, even if it's not a bylaw.
Well, what's to deter people from cutting through my property without a fence?
Well, if, if we can do something about it, we will. If we're not allowed to do something by zoning, we can't do it. You know, we can't require them to do something that we don't have the authority to require them to do.
Okay.
You know, you're here tonight to voice your concern, and the applicant's here, and so I think I'll, you know, it's fair to consider that it might be listened to anyway.
Is the water table going to be affected by this project? Am I going to be flooded?
We can hear from the applicant on this one?
We did rumors tests on the property concerning the elevation of the groundwater table. We also took into account the existing septic systems that were put in, both on your neighbors and for the septic system that's out behind your property that was put in several years ago. We put all the information together. The houses are being situated with the solar floors two feet above the groundwater. All the drainage systems that are going in, the bottom of the drainage systems are minimum two feet above the high groundwater table, which is required by the town. The septic system is situated five feet above the groundwater table in accordance with the rules and regulations. As far as the increase in the loading on the groundwater table, we've met all the criteria for both the county and the state.
Oh, I didn't even see that one.
So will it affect the groundwater? That I really cannot tell you. I mean, we have met all the criteria and all the rules and regulations in effect.
Well, I know when it, when it rains very hard, I get a lot of water in my driveway. And a lot of it comes from sloping down from that property slopes down into my driveway. So that, you know...
Direct all your comments up here. Don't, don't cross-talk.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
When it rains hard, a lot of water drains down into my driveway immediately where my home is. And I'm worried about being flooded, for one thing.
Well, on the development plan, with the grading, part of the issue is, what we're going to do is we're creating a water swell, you know, a swell down between the house and the property line. So that anything that's draining towards your property right now will run down towards the Anderson's existing house, and then it will drain out towards the pond. So actually, we are going to be reducing the flow onto your property by absolutely eliminating anything that's going there right now.
Yeah, he's asking.
And Evan, in that vein, is there a reason why you've requested the waiver for soil testing?
Basically, we went in there and the entire area, both this piece of property and the property next door, is all gravelly sand, coarse material. We couldn't, couldn't even run perk tests because the water went, we couldn't even keep the water in the hole long enough to do the perk tests. We did take soil samples out on this piece of property, out of one of the tests, and had them sent to the lab. And, and the testing shows that it's pure sand.
I have another comment about the, right now in the town of Norfolk, the water restrictions are very strong. I can't even water my flowers, for instance, or wash my car. You're going to put 26 unit, or 13 units in there with 26 families? What's that going to do to the water in Norfolk?
That, that's not for our review.
No?
No.
Does that have, does that have to pass another board or something?
Oh, no. You do have a couple of other questions on the email that you sent.
Yes.
And yes, they do meet zoning, the two-unit buildings. But you also asked, you had a comment about brightness of public lighting. There's only one public light that they're recommending, and that's at the end of the public way that they're planning on putting in. The only other lighting is on their private drive. So we will review it. But it is on a private drive. That's not public lighting when it's, when it's on their private drive.
But Steve, you might want to mention, too, that even when it's on private property, there are lighting standards and the foot candle, they can't be spilled over onto the abutting property.
Yeah, there's nothing that could spill over onto your property. We require the light to stop at the property line.
Speaking of that private drive, that this was the note from Bob Bullock. And I think what it's pointing out is that public, that private drive is being considered a driveway and therefore would require 25-foot setbacks from that driveway to the new structures? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, but to, as Evan pointed out, the, in the B1 district, in this district, the planning board has the authority to vary the dimensional requirements. Now, I'm just, I need to check the latest zoning that passed, because it might have changed. But in the latest book that I have, it's, that only applies to a PMLD.
And this is not coming?
But I, I thought I did remember something about eliminating that, or expanding that requirement to non-PMLD developments as well. That, that might have been part of the, the package of changes in May.
And from what I remember, it was just left generally open that we had the authority to change that, but it didn't limit it in terms of what the distance was.
Right, yes.
Well, even at Pin Oaks and the adjacent development, the, their setbacks off of their private drives are less than 25 feet, aren't they? They seem as though they're very close to the street.
Yes, but again, that, but that was because those are technically driveways serving that development, they're not public ways.
Oh, right, but isn't that what, the question that she's asking, that they're even considering?
No, all the units are fine, except one and 13, the two, the two that are but the proposed public way.
I see.
I have another question.
That's not how I read Bob's.
Yes.
Under residential density here, it says residential density, except for assisted living facilities, shall not exceed the ratio of 16 bedrooms for any single lot except by special permit. So is this permit allowing these extra units, too?
Is that a residential zone?
No, in this, in the B1 outside the business core district, the density is based on one unit per 5,000 square feet of the lot. The lot has 150-something thousand square feet, so the maximum density would be 31 units, and they're proposing 26.
Yes, we have another question. Make sure you identify yourself for the record.
I am Matthew Kelly from 111 Main Street. Does that include the wetlands? Is that included in that calculation?
Yes.
So if there was entirely wetlands and...
No, they couldn't build on, if they were on wetlands, they couldn't build on it, but it can be included in the lot area.
Any other questions?
Why do they have...
You have to identify yourself.
Mary Shivers, 109 Main Street. If it's not wetlands, why do they have to raise the land up to build the houses?
It has to do with groundwater. They have to raise their septic and foundations above the groundwater.
So that they don't get flooding in their basement?
So they're not sitting in the groundwater. So groundwater is, is not wetlands. It's underground. So they have, but they know how deep their foundations have to be to stay five feet above the groundwater.
Is there a care of the septic system for all these people?
It has to be five feet, for septic also?
Yeah.
Five feet, five feet above the groundwater. So if they put their septic four feet, three feet underground, they have to be eight feet above, they have to be another five feet above that. Yep, another question over here?
Yeah, please. This goes along with Mr. Diamond's water questions.
Identify yourself, please.
I'm Robert Ray from 49 Seagull Street. What's, with the displacement of, say, so many roof square feet and pavement, I'm wondering, is there any retention ponds to keep this water from coming further downstream to me? I think that was Mr. Diamond's concern, too.
Well, they have to deal with, with all their water on site. They have to accumulate it.
Okay.
They can't let it run off-site.
And what they're not proposing a retaining area, and so, I mean, what they have to prove through engineering calculations is that they're able to achieve that. Otherwise, they would have to propose some kind of a retaining pond or something.
Yeah, my other concern is whether or not the board is considering how many children could come into this and how that would affect our...
could come into this and how that would affect our schools, which are overcrowded at this time.
Not within our purview.
That's not been addressed.
Yes, another question?
Candace Colby, 105 Main Street. Our house is directly across from where you're proposing the town road. I'm... Okay. Has... Have there been any studies done on how many cars? Because just doing the math, it could... For me, I'm doing the math between both properties, and I know we haven't talked about the other property yet, but it could be anywhere from 50 to 100 cars, depending on... Most people... If two people live in a place, they each have a car. But let's just say one person does. We're talking maybe 50 cars. Is that... How does that impact the road, the people getting in and out of their driveways? It's already a little touchy sometimes, different times of the day.
We can require a traffic study. What's the calculation that's used per unit for numbers of car...
For a condominium, it's seven to eight cars per day.
Seven or eight cars per day?
Excuse me. Wrong term. Vehicle trips. So that's four cars going in and out per unit per day. It's probably about 10% of that during the peak hour.
So I think it's a fair question and a fair comment, and I... Part of what we will receive back from Tom when he's doing his review is probably some... Maybe we could ask you, Tom, to take a look at that as he's conducting his review. I don't think we have enough information to really give any kind of feedback to that question, but it's...
Okay. I have one other question. Why concrete rather than granite curbing?
They're just requesting it.
Okay.
It requires a waiver.
Okay. Because doesn't concrete kind of degrade with salt and all that? I mean, isn't it?
Could... It could.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Colby, 105 Main Street. One of the things with the traffic, is there any... I would have concern with, on the other side of the street, headlight wash across all the homes and so on. And that's gonna be, you know, sort of an irritant. So I'm curious as to what kind of plants will be put in the front? Is there anything... Any consideration to that?
Well, you can always talk with the applicants and see if you could negotiate something on your side that might be able to alleviate the headlights that come out of the roadway. It's done often in different locations.
A second question is more... I'm more curious, because you even mentioned that the ground is very sandy and it's very wet there. It just... How do you evaluate the septic system and its impact on that groundwater going through? Who does that? I mean, there must be some issues with that, because the railroad in the back is going to prevent the water flowing that way. It all has to come towards the street and the ponds.
Well, that's the surface. The... Once they collect... They would have to collect all that. And they've analyzed what's below ground, and they've analyzed it and found that it's sandy soil. So our consultant will be reviewing all of the data that they submit for their soils and their drainage and septic and everything else.
As will the Board of Health.
As will the Board of Health, that's right.
I'd like to make one more comment if I may.
You need the microphone?
Actually, Mike wanted to do it.
Oh, did Mike want to make a comment, too?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I forget?
I just want to comment on one thing more. As we know, the MBTA train runs by there. Occasionally, freight trains go by, and my house shakes. And it shakes quite a bit. I'm wondering what's gonna happen to those properties that are gonna be closer.
Buyer beware.
Mike Finland, 112 Main Street. I'm right in the corner there. Where's the water line going in? How do you bring the water into that property?
The water's being brought in underneath the proposed pavement for the new road.
All right, through all the wetlands and stuff?
And then when it gets in, it's gonna tee, and there'll be a main going each direction.
And as far as the swamp, you guys proposing any type of bridge or anything? Like, what kind of a structure? Because like you said, there's an old 12-inch... And my concern is, you know, you start running trucks and everything under there. My property is to the left, and you start crushing pipes to the pipe. I don't want that water backing up into mine on 112 Main.
Well, basically, in the construction of the roadway, we're gonna be raising the grade approximately three feet where that pipe currently exists.
And what's there now, did you say?
There's a 12-inch concrete pipe.
Do we know who put that in or the age of it or anything like that? We don't know anything about that, right?
No.
Oh, okay. So probably in 1970. So my concern is just out and run trucks and a lot of cars over that. So that potentially could break.
Except that you don't have... Kind of more of looking at the road construction, because it's their road.
And that was my concern, because now you're looking to put it over 12-inch and old concrete, and then you're asking the town to take this thing over.
The issue is, it's gonna meet the standards for a public road, so I'm sure Town DPW is going to make sure that it works properly.
So you don't have anything proposed yet? I mean, the DPW still has...
As far as replacing it or upgrading it, no. Nothing proposed.
That'll be up to DPW. All right.
We've looked at the design and determined that the increase of three feet of fill over that is actually gonna decrease the current loading on the pipe, because it's providing more of a buffer and will allow the loading to be dispersed farther out away from the pipe. And therefore, you know... Because currently, right now, there are tractor trailers that do go in there with hay and feed and everything for Mr. Anderson's property out back. And it currently only has three feet of cover over it. We're gonna add three feet of cover, which will soften the impact on the pipe.
I mean, I realize hay's a lot lighter than concrete. But anyway, the DPW, that's their job. Affordable housing, too, right? Anything over 10, they have to have an affordable housing unit? So you're talking two, right?
Oh, yeah.
Two units will have to be affordable housing?
Yeah, there is a requirement for affordable housing, yes.
Okay. In my last comment, I know we talked about trees. Like I said, I'm at 112 Main Street, so I'm kind of on both sides of that. I know we talked about trees, fence, privacy. And I know you guys can't make him do it, but I realize that he's looking for waivers. He's looking for favors for you. So I know you guys can highly recommend that he puts trees and fences up. I know the game. So like you said, he's asking for you a favor, you can certainly ask him for a favor. So, all right. Okay.
Anybody else?
Just one question. This is currently his own commercial... When they put the residents in, does that change, effectively change the...
No, it still remains the B-1 district.
It's allowed use in the B-1 district. Presidential is allowed.
Can these residents be used for any other commercial purpose, then? If it's zoned, so?
They could be all commercial right now.
So this could be... End up being a mall?
Absolutely.
Ask me to ask, is the current house going to stay?
No, it is not.
Is that it? Okay. We're gonna make a motion to continue this.
To continue it?
Yeah. When do you want to continue this, too?
As soon as possible.
Well, that would be the 27th, then, right?
That would be the 27th. I think that... I think pushing it for 8:30 might be a little tight, considering what the... What we have already put for that day. So 8:45?
Sorry. I move that we continue the public hearing for the...
108.
Yeah, for the development at 108 Main Street until August 27th at 8:45 PM.
Second.
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 Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll go on to 106, 108 Main Street. Definitive subdivision with Dover Land Surveying.
All right. In accordance with the Town of Norfolk Planning Board Rules and Regulations in Chapter 41 C, Section 81-T and 81-U, Mass. General Laws, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 6, 2013, at 9:15 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, on the application of Peter S. Chipman of Norfolk, Massachusetts for approval of a proposed definitive subdivision plan entitled Old Town Pond Landing by Dover Land Surveying, Inc. of Medfield, Massachusetts, dated July 16, 2013, located at 106 and 108 Main Street, showing two lots. The property is located in the B-1 outside the Core Zoning District. Reference Assessor's Map, 14 block, 56 lots, 7 and 8. Plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular business hours.
Okay. Same presenter?
Yes. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Chipman for a definitive subdivision plan. Basically, what we're proposing is, as I mentioned before, a proposed public way up the existing property line to provide access to the two future projects. The road is basically being proposed as public way with reduced cross-sections and with so as to provide minimal impact on the two existing wetland and ponds on each side of the entrance. Basically, what we're asking for is a 40-foot wide right-of-way, starting at the street, straddling the property line, and then dead-ending. And we're proposing two temporary turnarounds in a hammerhead formation for turnaround purposes for emergency vehicles or whatever. Those, again, will be temporary as we have the two other projects ongoing. As far as the grading, as I mentioned, we're gonna be holding the back of the existing sidewalk as-is, and from there, we're gonna be going in, down at about 1% for 100 feet, then up for 1% at 100, then back down again about 1% for 200 feet, and then it'll go up at about 3% till we hit the tee. The reason we have the two bumps is so we can contain all the drainage within the roadway pavement and still be able to have it drain out into a proposed retention basin and provide adequate clearance between the bottom of the basin and the existing groundwater table in that area. As far as the grading on the road, as I said before, the road's gonna be 24 feet wide with two 6-inch concrete curbs. There'll be a 3-foot... A 5-foot wide sidewalk on one side, which gets you up to 30 feet. And then the other five feet on each side will be used for grading purposes. On one side, we'll be going off at 3:1 slope, meeting the town requirement. On the other side, it will be a 3:1, except for in the area of this existing culvert pipe where it breaks out of the ground. We're proposing to reduce it to 1:1 slope and to hold back that slope with riprap stone. As far as the utilities, again, there'll be... There's an existing water main and gas line out in the street. We'll be running those off the roadway. We'll be installing two sets of catch basins with manholes and a storm scepter, which will then dump out into the proposed retention basin. The electricity right now is on poles across the street and accessing the Andersons' existing house by a set of poles that go up what is now gonna be the middle of our roadway. We're proposing to put in one new pole off to the side of the layout and then run underground electric cable, TV, and phone up through... In the layout, up to the proposed site. As far as landscaping, we're proposing street trees, basically every 35 feet, both sides of the road. They're gonna be on the outside of the sidewalk on this side, because we do not have a grass berm in there. And then on the outside of the curbing on this side, all the way back to the tee. And as far as lighting, the lighting, we have nothing proposed right now at the street, but we are proposing lighting at the intersection above.
Anybody have any questions on this before I turn it over to Gino? Tom doesn't quite have the details yet.
I'm a little confused. So this is the same exact roadway we just saw?
Mm-hmm.
And now I understand it straddles two different properties, but you're basically proposing the same exact thing you just told us, but you have to do it twice because it's two separate properties?
Yeah, because they're linked.
Yeah, but it's all the same issues?
It's basically...
Everything we just discussed?
Basically, yeah.
With curbing, planting, size, all that stuff. We just have to go through it twice formally because it's two different properties. Is that right?
That is correct. Gino?
Okay. A couple of technical issues on the locust plan and overview plan weren't exactly like the bylaw requires. Comment number four, a street name is required. I didn't see one on this plan, but I think I saw one on the preliminary plan for 106 of Old Town Pond Landing Road or something like that.
Gino, Peter Chipman applicant. I thought the selectmen, when it's a town road, assign the name.
Yes, but the applicant can propose a name. That's all.
Haven't come up with one yet. Have you?
Again, a technical issue. The frontage of the two new lots is supposed to be shown at the setback lines. It wasn't... It's really not gonna be relevant in this case, because the projects are not along the There was a waiver request to not show... A waiver request for the requirement to show the contour that's four feet above the high watermark.
How would that be?
I don't know.
How would that be? Why would you request that waiver?
I mean, I could show the groundwater where it is.
I didn't grab that.
I mean, on previous plans, we've shown the actual groundwater table, however, because a lot of the testing in the front part of number 108, actually 106, was done unofficially by another company. They did not dig down completely to groundwater table. So, I mean, in the areas that I tested myself, I can firmly establish where the groundwater is, either by modeling or by actual observed groundwater. But in the front areas, I... Basically, the ponds, the ponds of groundwater, in some instances, down close to it, especially this pond, when you get up, you know, the groundwater could be three, four, five feet in the ground. But we're not proposing doing anything in that area either.
Couple other waivers that were requested was for the impact study and assessment, traffic study, construction sequencing plan, and test pit. Number 14, Section 4.6, requires provision be made for logical extension of streets to adjacent properties. In this case, the railroad is above there, so it could not be extended. We talked about the street trees outside the sidewalks, is another waiver. The 50-foot right-of-way being waived to 40 feet. There's another waiver for the limit on the vertical curve. I guess it has to do with raising it up three feet.
Yeah.
Waiver from the dead-end, the requirement for a cul-de-sac at the end of the dead-end, because a hammerhead is proposed. There weren't details for... There weren't details for the driveways off the roadway. I guess the driveways are really the hammerhead entering the two proposed adjacent residential Most of these other ones we've also already talked about. The last thing was, a waiver was requested from section eight of the rules and regs, and I don't think it's necessary because...
No, not for the subdivision plan.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
I'm getting confused because of this statement here. That had to do with dead ends and cul-de-sacs. Now, weren't you proposing a temporary hammerhead that would be eliminated when the cul-de-sacs go in? Is that correct?
It will be eliminated when these roads get built.
Right. Okay.
That's why we're requesting the waiver for the cul-de-sac regulations with the 47-foot radius curves and everything, because as this gets constructed and finally gets released, the two other projects will immediately start construction. And, you know, if we had to put in a temporary cul-de-sac, we'd have to tear it right out again.
Yeah, but also the, it's technically a permanent hammerhead because that's part of, that would be part of the public right-of-way that would remain. It would remain as a hammerhead. And then, yes, the cul-de-sacs would be the private ones at the, on each side, or at least on one side.
Now, I'm not sure if this is the same letter from Bob McGee that was in the other one, but I'll just read this one to the record. We received a memorandum from Robert McGee, the Director of Public Works, and this brings up the point that you brought up, Mike, that he does have concern about linking those ponds. It says, "The existing waterway ponds, drain, pipes, and trenches that collect the existing 12-inch reinforced concrete pipe appear to be operational but primitive. Given that the DPW may assume future maintenance and repairs, we request that an evaluation be completed and explained in a report." So, did you get this one from Bob McGee?
I have not seen that one.
That's a different one, by the way.
Well, yeah, okay.
Steve, up on my...
And then he gives some examples. He further says that the existing culvert should be, this is just as an example, should be flushed and televised for structural evaluation. The water bodies and drain pipes are joined by open trenches. The larger pond is controlled by a concrete wear. Do the trenches need to be widened in or stabilized? Is the wear structurally sound? So he goes on to give some things he'd like to have looked into. I think right on the lines, Mike, you want your...
Did you have a comment on that?
Yes, Steve. This has been a concern brought up by the Concom Chairman, the fire chief even before his lieutenant, and Bob himself. I addressed the parameters of which was necessary with the planning board engineers on what would be expected. Evan's aware of it, and that will be provided. Secondly, I'd like to also bring up the idea of potentially using a 22-foot paved surface as we did in other developments, most notably the one out by the airport. I think saving that two extra feet that we could use potentially for a grass strip or something like that might be in, you know, the roadway's benefit. It's something I'd like to throw out there, given the fact that, you know, the wider the road, the more plowing, the more expense for the town.
All right.
Okay. Steve?
Yes?
You're saying to add three feet on top of the present culvert?
Yes.
What, to print the fill to what? Would that print the fill over the culvert at, too?
About six foot eight, I believe.
Okay. All right. You're going to have railings? Are there any railings proposed at the side of the culvert right now?
Well, the culvert, no.
Okay.
There will be guard rail along the section of road that is going to be rip-wrapped.
Any more comments from the board?
Nope.
Okay, we'll take comments and questions from the public, but only about what we're discussing right here. Anybody?
Deidre LaRusso, 103 Main Street. This is, this is the, going to be a proposed town road?
That's what they're proposing.
Okay. Maybe because we're on this subject and not the one previous. The one into the subdivision, did they have to maintain that road themselves?
The one where the houses are located, those are private drives, so they will have to maintain them themselves.
Okay. And is this a stupid question? What's going to go off the right?
We'll see that in our next hearing, which is going to be happening in just a few minutes.
As soon as the questions are over.
Yes?
Paul Comey, 105 Main Street. Did I hear that one of the waivers requested was on traffic study?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Obviously, that would be a major concern for all the residents in the area that that traffic study be done properly. And by the way, second question, same question about landscaping in the front, the same question about light wash and so on, both landscaping on opposite side of the street and how that is going to be presented, frankly, in both projects.
All right. Anybody else? Oh?
Well, no.
Oh, okay.
Carrie Shu is one of the... How many houses are going in over there?
We'll know in a minute when we have the second hearing on the, third hearing, yeah.
It's not a submission. It's not a hearing.
Another question.
Yes.
Do we have to waive the water course study? That was asked, proposed.
The what?
The water course study.
That wasn't a study. That was, the rules require...
Easement.
Uneasement, so the town can maintain it in case of an emergency.
I'd like to study it. I'd like to have a study, please.
I think Concom had a concern about that also. All right. Nobody else? Someone going to make a motion to continue this one?
Yeah, I'll do that. I move to continue the public hearing for the proposed subdivision plan entitled Old Town Pond Landing at 106 and 108 Main Street until August 27th at...
All right. He probably filed the other ones for nine.
At 9:00 PM.
Nine? Yeah, okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. You know what? Let's see, I don't have another public hearing.
It says public hearing.
It's not a public hearing. Okay, I take it back.
Oh, oh, this one's a pre-submission. Okay. Good observation here.
Yep.
Yeah. So, so the next one is a pre-submission review. It's not actually a public hearing like the last one was. This is just where we're going to be seeing details. It's not their final plan. That's for 106. All right. Got a mic?
Yeah.
I'm here on behalf of Peter Chipman, the owner of number 106 Main Street.
My name's Evan Wilmouth with the Dover Land Savin Company. Again, this is a continuation of the last two projects we just talked about. What we are proposing is to come off the hammerhead with a 24-foot wide drive that loops in and around a parking lot. We're proposing four buildings. Three of them will be three-story. These are going to be apartment buildings. These three will be 12 units each, four units of a floor. The back will be two-story. There'll be four on the first floor and three on the second floor. Basically, due to the requirement of one and a half cars per unit, we determined the number of parking spaces, and we've actually provided about six extra, which can be used as guest parking. We've also included the required number of handicap spaces. Each pair of buildings in between, there will be a dumpster area with roll-off dumpsters that can go back out of the sidewalk to the main roadway. And off the back of each of those will be a fencing area for generators, because these are apartment buildings, the septic systems, which are going to be pumped, will have to provide generators for the pumps in case of a power failure. Again, all the work we're proposing for this project is outside the 100-foot buffer zone from any portion of the wetlands around the pond, the brook we're crossing, or even the wetlands next door on the town property. As far as the grading, we've got the existing detention pond, which handles all the drainage on the roadway up to the hammerhead. The grading, basically, the back of this building will be about a foot and a half out of, above grade. These buildings were set based on the water tables, again, due to the height of the groundwater. These buildings will have to be raised up a little, so there will be a proposed retaining wall along the back of them, approximately about anywhere from two to three feet high with grading coming down into it. The house out, the apartment building out in the back will basically be set at existing grade or within a foot. As far as utilities, again, we have the existing detention, retention pond. We're proposing a series of catch basins at this driveway entrance into the parking area, which will go into an underground detention area, which is capable of handling a 100-year storm. Then each separate unit will be fed both with gas and electric, and, well, gas and water through the front. There's also a bump out for a water system, for the sprinkler system for the building. And on the opposite side is going to be the electric control for the electricity for all the buildings. And then there's also the septic tanks, pump chambers, which all pump up and go into these separate systems up above. Each building has its own system. Each system is approximately 2,000 gallons apiece. There is also, each building is provided with detention or retention basins underground, which are capable of handling a 100-year storm. Basically, that's the layout of the parking in the building. As far as lighting, the entire parking lot is going to be lit up to meet the town requirements. And there will be no other lighting towards Main Street or towards the other project.
Is there a lighting plan in here?
There should be. I think it's sheet eight.
Yeah, there is. It's down towards the end.
Oh, okay. And those are the same standard fixtures that you were talking about before?
Yep. 15-foot high. In this case, most of them are double units facing front and back.
Now, are these drives that go between the buildings that go out towards the rear?
Actually, there's five-foot wide sidewalks...
Oh, okay.
...that feed out to the back, because there's entrances in both the front and the back. And then there's also the side, five-foot wide sidewalks that feed down to where the trash dumpsters are.
Does anyone have any question? Anyone on the board have any questions? Right?
Not at this time.
Michelle?
No, I mean, I understand the concept and the proposal. I think it, you know, requires a whole lot of review by different town boards and authorities, but I understand the concept of what's being proposed.
Oh, so there's no parking in the building? There's no garages? So everyone parks in the center part? And it requires that much parking? I would...
The regulation is one and a half spaces per unit.
Ellen, in an emergency, if a tree fell down or something blocked that main access road, how do you get emergency vehicles into this site?
The tree would have to be cut and removed. Basically, that is going to be the standard in and out for the entire project.
I don't have any questions right now. I'd have to get a lot more comments before I do. And Gino, do you have comments on this one?
Just one question. This plan appears to show sidewalks on both sides of that entrance roadway?
Actually, that's the property line. That's the property line that follows now. The sidewalk is on this side all the way around, and there's the handicap ramp to access the handicap ramp across the street.
But then if the sidewalk ends there at the handicap ramp, it doesn't...
What you see is, the outside line is the property line for the street and then the curb.
I'd say I do have one general question. Have two applicants talked at all in terms of construction logistics and timing, and if you have two different contractors and construction vehicles, and this is all happening at the same time? Has any discussions taken place about?
We are jointly, if you can hear me, Donna. We are under an agreement already to jointly develop the roadway. Our individual sites will be developed separately, and timetables have not been determined yet. If I can make a couple other comments along this.
Sure.
This site was designed completely within what town meeting passed to bring our more doorways downtown, to make our commercial area more viable. It also employs the less than one and a half cars per unit under the TOD standards for sustainability, because what our target market is, from my site, I can't speak for Majib, is getting away from the $4 a gallon gas and getting people on the railway. And that is who we are going to market to. But if you look for the sustainable principles of TOD, transit-oriented development, actually, I think it's 1.3 cars. Our standards are a little higher in Norfolk to allow same. So that's the reason why this was developed that way. So it's twofold, not only the public transportation, but to get the doorways downtown, which is the reason why we rezoned this whole area at this density two years ago.
Are there any other comments from the public? Yes?
Will we have the possibility across the street to rezon our property to allow density this thick?
If it goes before town meeting, I mean, you can always talk to the people that do the zoning. You can go to the planning board. The planning board can always bring something forward if they want to. It can be done, you can actually get it on the warrant yourself if you try. You just need a certain number of signatures. You'd probably need a little help.
Actually, Matt, if I can clarify.
The town votes.
As a property owner, you have the right to rezone your own property without even a petition. You can bring it forward to town meeting. I'll give you a perfect example. You know where Frank's, grows his houses?
Yeah.
The house right behind it felt it was to their benefit when they couldn't sell it before, and they wanted it rezoned for B1, and it was accepted. So, any other questions?
But town meeting is what votes on that.
Town meeting has to change it.
It's ultimately up to town to give you that answer.
I'm not sure if I misunderstood or not, but...
Identify.
Deirdre Russo, 103 Main Street. Bringing more people for walking for our businesses. We don't let businesses in this town. I mean, I've lived here for 32 years. This is like one of the toughest towns to get a business in, so we're going to bring people in.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
Well, it's tough.
They're not clamoring to come here.
But to bring, that's because it's so hard to work around things here.
No, no, it's because it's hard to, it's hard to get the concentration into the center of town. I mean, that's part of the problem. There's, it's done by counting roofs or something within a certain distance, and we don't really have the concentration. That's why we're trying to get more residential in the center of town because then the businesses would be supported.
Just one more time. I just want to know how this complies with a small-town New England community feel, how this fits in this development?
Well, it is in the B1 district. It's not throughout the town. It's only allowed in the B1 district, in the center of town. And, you know, the center of town is going to have to grow a little bit if we want to have some commercial in our downtown. So this is part of it.
Tom McAdams, New Hat Economic Committee, for town of Norfolk. I will tell you that the town of Norfolk is at the bottom of the density level of interest because of lack of residential population. If you look at Franklin, if you look at Mansfield, if you look at Walpole, if you look at Foxborough, we are at the bottom of the list because we don't have enough density in our center of town, and yet we have a train station, which some of the others do not. So there's a lot of issues here, which is why the zoning has been created over the last 20 years to allow this kind of development to occur. It wasn't by accident. We've been procedurally going through this, going to town meetings, having the town vote on it, and this is where we're at.
The town tax base, 94% of what we collect in town for taxes comes from residences. And if we can entice more commercial development in town, not only in the center, but in other commercial areas that we have within town, we'll all be better off making that 93%, or 92%, or 91% and getting more commercial tax base. And this is one way to do that, is to bring more people into the center of town to entice businesses to come because there's people there who come in the door and buy things, to echo what Bob has said.
Yes.
Can this call me 105 Main Street? Turn it off. Move on.
Hear me now? I'm not opposed to bringing more people into the town or building or, you know, development, but my concern is that it's done well and done nicely. Is there any way that we can see what these buildings would look like?
We will know what everything looks like before it goes in.
Part of our review...
Before it's approved, what it looks like?
Yes, part of the review process will also go. We have a design review board in town, and so they're part of the whole approval process. And, you know, weigh in, we just had a building we looked at tonight where they weigh in on very specific elevation issues, so absolutely.
Paul called me, 105 Main Street. Obviously, one of the questions is, and I echo what my wife just said, that frankly, not opposed to the property being developed. It's the level of the density that is at question here, I think. And that's the key element that I think we need to look at, and that is the traffic patterns, the light flow, and so on. There are other open spaces in downtown. This is not the only place that all this can occur. And we've got to think of it from a planning point of view, that you spread it out within the downtown community and not put it all in one spot.
Well, we don't choose where things go. People develop their own property, so this happens to be...
Well, the densities have been chosen though. The densities of the zoning areas, so this B1, has been strategically aligned to try and promote a certain area of town. Now, whoever owns that property, we can't say, well, gee, you should develop more here before you develop there. The landowners are going to choose that. But the zoning and density has specifically been strategized around trying to make it in keeping with where the town center development should be.
And if you may recall, a year ago, May, at the town meeting, there was a videotape shown, which talked about one possible vision for the way the town center could be developed with clusters of high-density residences. They were in these areas in the lower B1 district. They were on that property that Mr. Chipman referred to just across the railroad tracks behind Frank Gross's house. They were on some of the pieces of property that are in the center of town and undeveloped, where it was, might be possible to put a three-story building with two stories of residences above commercial developments down below, or businesses, or restaurants, or whatever. So there's been some thought given to how the town center potentially could develop. Now, that was just one vision. How it will ultimately develop, we don't know because, as my colleagues say here, it's up to the owners of those pieces of property to come forward with development plans. But we are trying to think about how the center of town can be developed in a reasonable way.
Any other comments? Nope. So this one was not a special permit, I mean, was not a public hearing, so we're not going to be continuing this one. But they will be coming back, and if you're in a butter, you will be notified about that. The other ones you will not be re-notified on.
Notification is tonight.
You got the notification tonight, if you remember the date. It's August 27th, and I think the times were...
8:45.
8:45 and nine o'clock.
Yep.
Sorry.
Didn't say a word, did he?
No, no. Smart.
Yeah. By the way, we were going to meet with a selectman on the 20th to do the business of electing an associate member.
Yes.
But we can't because they're not meeting. No, that's not true, because I can't...
No, we were going to meet tonight.
We're going to meet tonight.
Originally, we were going to meet tonight, but they couldn't make it.
To us, but you couldn't.
Right.
So we're proposing the 27th. First order of business.
For the first order of business, they're coming into our meeting.
Oh, okay. Can they make it that day? Have we heard?
He was going to check with the other member, Jim.
I mean, Jim is going to check with them, but that's the proposal as it stands at the moment.
When is the 20th?
First order is...
Two weeks from today. And the 27th is three weeks from today. That's when we have a scheduled on next meeting.
27th, first order of business, 7:30.
The committee is today. I've yet to hear anything about what the housing choice is for the Southwood Hospital Fund, anybody.
I emailed Jack. I copied you on my email, right? I emailed him, I haven't heard a thing back from him. I don't think anyone's heard.
Okay. Because I sent an invitation to the applicant, but haven't heard from that either. Nothing. Okay.
There's nothing, nothing I've...
All right, thanks, Bob.
Are you saying that there's no meeting on Thursday?
Oh, there's a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because the town, and we've been directed to start something, but the only notes I have go back to 2011.
Well, that was the meeting with the board of selectmen, when they made the original presentation.
Yeah.
And John Weddleton was, wanted no part of it.
These are the guys from Hoboken, right?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Good night.
All right, 269 Dedham Street. Do we have an as-built review?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. The, an as-built plan was submitted a couple of months ago, which we reviewed, an updated as-built plan was submitted. What's a little confusing is they didn't change the date of the plan, so it's still dated May 30, even though there were revisions on it. So you've got two plans with the same date, which is a little confusing. The current version of the plan, they did update certain things. Comment number three, there is an exterior sign that was in the right-of-way. It's apparently a sign on kind of a cart-type device, so they pushed it back onto the site and they depicted its current location on the as-built plan, so that's...
Sorry, 269, where is that on?
That's Northeast Tractor on Route 1A, sort of opposite the Eagleburg area type thing. Okay. Comment number four, there was a slight discrepancy. 28 parking spaces were required on the original plan. They ended up with 27. They spaced them a little bit differently. Comment number five, the existing freestanding sign, as I mentioned, is now located outside the right-of-way. And the other changes, dimensions of, number 10, dimensions of a typical parking space are now shown. 11, limits of the Cape Cod berm are shown. A benchmark is now shown. Number 12, and horizontal site distances were added at the, at the site entrances. So the as-built plan has been updated, but the other part of this is, when you're doing the as-built plan, you sort of check it against the approved plan. And there were several things that weren't done. Like, it was supposed to be a farmer's porch added on the front of the building, a formal new sign constructed, et cetera. So I would anticipate that there were probably economic constraints whereby the original site plan was not entirely completed.
Well, it can't be signed as an as-built if it doesn't exist, right?
That is correct. The as-built is accurate. The issue is that everything originally indicated on the site plan was not constructed.
So how do we enforce that? What do we, does that go through Bob Bullock?
Well, we haven't signed the site plan yet.
Right.
We haven't signed the as-built.
Right. But who goes...
Yes, he could, yeah.
Yes.
Who has to go back and enforce that, hey, these things haven't been done?
Or do they come back to us with a request of modification?
Asking for modifications if they don't plan to do them.
Yeah, I mean, if there's an economic issue, that would be a...
That would be the approach, probably, yeah, yeah.
The presumption that there's an economic issue, that they just didn't choose to do what they wanted to do.
Yeah.
So, again, who is the body that goes and enforces to get a reaction one way or another?
It wouldn't be Bob, wouldn't it, Bob Bullock?
Yeah, he's our enforcement officer.
So can we sort of draft a memo to him of things that we saw not conforming to the site plan approval and ask him to follow up on that?
Yep. Betsy, can you do that? And mention the, what Tom has, you can just say, Tom has sent us a memo, and you could even just send a copy of the memo attached.
Copy of the memo.
Did you have fun?
What's that?
Did you have fun?
Spending almost 15 and a half years getting ready for it. 10 with Betsy, no, 15 and a half with her.
Okay. So that's okay. Now, did you happen to notice?
It's pure intuition.
I think when I went by there that they were told that they could not change their sign unless they brought it up to code. Now, did they change their sign to say Northeast Tractor?
On the building sign?
I don't think so. Didn't do this fieldwork myself.
Oh, okay.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I think they did. I thought, you know what? It might have changed, Steve, and I'm thinking that, but it's Mitch's right now. I think he had to put it back.
It certainly was at one point, Mitch's, I don't know.
I think it's back to Mitch's. There may have been an interim period that it wasn't.
It might be too.
Yeah, someone may have said something to him. Maybe it was Peter.
No, no, no.
Get that, get that somewhere.
No, no, no. I mean, unfortunately, Bob has a cease and desist on him for, I guess, one of his subtenants was doing work that wasn't approved yet or whatever. So I think that might have been picked up in the, that might have been picked up when Bob did his site concerns on the subtenant.
So you're going to be sending that out. What else do we have here?
I've got one item from the reading matter. Tom's got another point.
I have one thing. I wanted to mention Toils End Farm before it gets inordinately late here.
Oh, okay.
At the last meeting, there was, I guess, two meetings ago, there was discussion on a proposed easement that Pulte Holmes is endeavoring to negotiate with Walter, who owns Lot Number 72. The problem is, and there was confusion over what is and isn't being required for trails, but the existing entrance to the paddocks and corrals starts out as a driveway, and then, once it gets by the buildings, kind of becomes a trail. It's paved for a distance and the paving stops, but certain members of the board rode down it. I mean, it's drivable, it's a very nice trail. The problem is, it was always shown on the trail map, but the owner of Lot 72 indicated that the public, he did not want the public passing across the portion of the driveway that is now on Lot 72. So there's a gap between the existing trail in back of the paddocks and corrals and the subdivision street. To get around that, and we, Jeff Palumbo and others discussed this with the Pulte Holmes folks, they have negotiated or have proposed and have just about finalized negotiations to provide the town with an easement that would initially go along the side of the driveway, then it get, when it gets to the back of Lot 73, it takes a left and goes over to the town conservation land, that so-called Maple Forest. So that easement would provide a means of getting from the subdivision street to the existing trail, only instead of going down the existing driveway, it would take a left and go onto the Maple Forest land and then have to find its way back onto the open space at the trailhead there near the back of the paddocks and corrals. So the issues are, Pulte Holmes is in a position to deliver us an easement. They want to, they're being very cooperative in terms of trying to fulfill all their obligations with respect to the subdivision approval. They can get the town an easement. So the question becomes, who's responsible for constructing a new trail? Through the easement, through the Maple Forest land connecting to the existing trail. Second thing is, what is the standard? The current subdivision plan showed as a standard just a five-foot-wide wood chip trail, clean out the brush, but don't do anything else. Don't pave it, don't do anything fancy. The third problem is, it looks like to make the connection, you're going to at least have to be working in a wetland buffer zone. Now, the intensity of the work there is pretty minor. Brush cutting five feet wide and maybe putting down some wood chips on the surface, but somebody has to draw that up as a plan. Somebody has to delineate the edge of wetland so we know whether we're in a buffer zone or in the wetland. And somebody has to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and hopefully the Conservation Commission would approve it. I sent around an email earlier today that showed from the Mass GIS, an approximation of wetlands in the Maple Forest area. It looks like they go pretty much the whole width of it, but it looks like there's a narrow band, fortunately about maybe 100 feet wide or so, between the edge of wetlands and Lot 72. So it does look like you can get a trail through there and only work in a buffer zone. But, you know, this is a statewide delineation, the edge is approximate. A guarantee to fulfill their responsibilities, Conservation Commission's going to want a wetland ecologist or biologist to say that the edge of wetland is here. I mention it because the Pulte folks are sort of up in the air. They don't know whether to finalize the easement or not, uncertain as to what the board wanted for construction standards, also uncertain, and maybe this is the key question of the whole thing, does the board want any parking at the beginning of this trail next to the subdivision street? Or is it sufficient just for residents to be able to walk there?
I would say even if someone wants to go there, they can just park on the street.
Well, when we did the site visit, it's completely possible just to kind of pull off over this edge of the trail kind of road area and makeshift parking. I'd vote for no parking.
Can you clarify something? Because I actually drove that whole site with John Weddleton the other day.
You know, that was his property, but where his property ends and the trail begins... I know, that was his property, but where's his property ends and the trail begins? There was areas...
Right, but you're only getting, the easement is going from the street, so you're not going to be able to drive down.
But can you explain to me, driving in there, say where the front of the Simortis house is, you know, the original house, and they have a small, like, garage barn to the right of it, and then you follow that roadway down to the, you know, the big barn and that stuff. Where is this easement in reference to where you're talking about?
Well, the whole thing is shifting, if you're facing the paddocks and corrals, it's all shifting to the right.
Wait, the paddocks and corral, you mean the...
If you were looking down the existing driveway, okay, from...
Which is to the left of the barn.
I always thought that the trail was to the left of the barn.
Because the trail kind of comes down and then you can go around, and there's like a stone path to the left of the barn. Is that what you're talking about?
If he's up at that house looking down, it's to the left of the barn.
Plan, easily graphical.
You know what, though, the infrastructure is so all over the place right now, you can't even tell.
So the easement is going, if you're from his house, go to the left of it, and the easement's going to run from the left-hand side, like where the driveway is.
As you look at the house?
The driveway going into the farm.
I'm way up at the house.
Yes, so I'm staring at the front door of the house.
Right.
Okay.
And there's a driveway to the left.
Yes.
Continue that driveway. That's the easement, I believe, that he's granting.
But you know what?
This is not to scale.
And then that's following then the road down to the left.
We had a sketch, you had brought a sketch...
But is he going to get us down?
I emailed it on...
I don't know if I read his copy.
Well, you had a couple of meetings ago.
Because you know what, they need a driveway cut, okay? We have a right to access to the open space. I don't see this 90-degree hook as optimal for people ever enjoying, even people that are living within the subdivision, that lower area.
Tom's doing a sketch.
Unless I am completely lost.
To a couple of the other questions, though, Tom, who, the subdivision plans that show that five-foot wood chip, whose plan do those belong to? Are those Pultes, are those Walter? Whose plan?
Walter got them approved and Pulte bought the whole thing.
And Pulte bought them. So, I mean, my answer is...
It's even clearer than this.
All right, show us where it is, Tom.
Take your pointer and go over there and...
I would like to know, because driving around there, I still couldn't find it. Okay, where is Simortis House?
Is this, that's this one.
Okay.
Here's the garage. So we're saying...
But right now, in order to get down to, where's the barn?
Down here.
Okay, in order to get down here, you go by...
There's a road that comes here.
There's a roadway that goes downhill and then goes up here.
Right.
Okay.
And I thought the easement was coming through.
Yeah, the issue is that the existing trail to remain is like back here.
Yeah, well, it starts kind of at the end of this.
Yeah, but wherever this property line is, that's where it will begin in the future. Right now...
And that gets you to where?
You kind of loop all the way around, I'm sorry, all the way around and you dead-end.
So you have open space in Rantham as well?
Somewhere in this area.
Is that Rantham open space?
I don't think that's Rantham, is it?
I actually think they stay in Norfolk the whole time, all the way to here.
All Norfolk.
And then you dead-end.
That's the term.
It's not a continuous loop.
Yeah.
This is where you dead-end.
But it might go through or something.
Why can't we just go right down here and get into this open space? Like, this area here?
Because that only connects back to Maple Street. You have to get over to the other side over there.
So therefore, why are we just allowing a left-hand...
The easement that we're, is here.
Yes.
That's being discussed.
Okay.
The easement's here, because we do not have access to this driveway into the barn.
His road, you know, that's up for debate still. And it's actually owned by the former partner of Walter now, okay, so...
Which is the problem.
The proposal is...
Which is the problem, yes.
And again, you want to get to about where the T is, okay, that's the object of the gate, that's where the trail sort of begins, wherever this property line is right here. So what's proposed is, Pulte has negotiated giving an easement between that driveway and lot 73, and essentially following the two sides of lot 73. So once you get over here, then the town or somebody, or the applicant or whatever, can build a new trail and get us back to the T here as soon as you clear lot 72. That's the proposal.
And he's talking about potential parking here?
No, I assumed he was talking about something here.
It would have to, I mean...
You could drive down the road, pull off, and then walk down the trail.
Oh, because you're not allowed...
Ideally...
The easement is only for a pedestrian path, it's not a driver's path?
So this is this basin, which is, they put up a big barrier, guardrail, because that drops down substantially right there. Okay.
That's a pond, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's not drainage, that's a pond.
Then where's that huge drainage basin? It must be on the Rantham side. Oh, it's down here?
Yeah. Well, it's an existing pond. This is an approximation of existing wetland.
Yeah, I mean, that leads up to...
That's the problem, is to, how do you skinny buy that without causing damage to the wetland, even though it's just a wood chip?
That's why ideally you just park here and walk what we did.
But I guess, doesn't our decision require an access easement to the, that open space?
No, I think that kind of slipped through the cracks. I think what was represented all the time was that, you know, this big trail system used to be much more extensive.
Yep.
And it was always shown...
Created by animals, really.
Yeah, always shown a trail going from here and continuing along that existing trail.
Right.
I don't think anybody ever thought of the fact that this segment of the driveway was going to end up on somebody's lot. So, you know, the representations that were made here by the owners of lot 72 and the original developers was, huh, there's not going to be any access. You can use the trail back there, but there was no provision for access from the subdivision roads. So that came up way after the approval, when that position was taken, so.
What is this double squiggly line?
Yeah, I was wondering, what is all this?
Right, this double line, especially where it crosses over the driveway to the barn.
No idea.
I don't know what that line is, so I'm...
You don't know? But I think that's a reason, I think it's reasonable to have it go along here and go into the open space. I don't find that to be unreasonable.
I agree with you.
Well, so long as we can get the trail.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think it's unreasonable.
I mean, they own the lot, so...
It's not that far out of the way. I mean, people are out for a walk, that's why they're out there. See, making it a little longer.
It's not vehicular.
Oh, absolutely not. These are all walking trails, these are all recreational trails.
But wasn't there a comment about...
You can drive, right?
Yeah, that's them.
We drove there the other day.
No, in the open space.
Then you're on someone's private property.
Jeff, Tom, and such. Michelle, we drove all the way up and around.
But you drove on this private property?
Yeah.
Well, to get on it, yes.
Plus, the driveway is in a different location now, it's about here, and it goes pretty much straight. This book is not yet...
So I guess if we're not going to allow people to drive down, I would be concerned about perhaps having some parking spaces, because you don't want people to start parking in front of their houses and...
That's going to be the most difficult part of the negotiation.
A couple of cars a day, maybe? I don't see that as being an issue.
No, park on the curb.
Yeah, you park on the side of the street, there are 24-foot streets.
I parked some days in front of my house on the street.
Yeah, that's true.
What Mark C. and Mark M. say is that they have influence over current owners of lot 72. They'll try to do whatever the board wants to fulfill their obligations. One of the tougher points on them that they'll do it if they have to is parking, because the parking is going to come out of Walter's lot also.
I don't think the parking is necessary.
And I think the detail of the five-foot wood chip...
Oh, absolutely. I completely agree.
It wasn't...
The only question is, who's going to construct?
Well, they have to construct.
I'd say they have to as well.
Pulte, they're the ones that are developing the site. They've all constructed, well...
Who's going to go through the...
But it's not on their property.
...time and expense of...
I think Pulte bought that, all of that.
They bought the plan, they bought the development.
The easement is not on their lot.
But the responsibility to go and...
They're building not on property, they're presently in charge of operating.
Oh, you're talking about putting it over here?
No, no, even just here. This is on lot 72.
Well, they, yeah, but they said that they can deal with that, right?
They can, they'll, I asked them today if the easement option was still available, and they said, yes, it is. So they can still offer that to the tenant.
The easement, not necessarily the construction.
Yes, the ownership of the land only, that's what's currently on the table, so.
Tom, have you got any feedback? Because to be honest with you, when we took a ride through there the other day, I'll tell you, I mean, maybe it's just a byproduct of, you know, a lot of blasting, but boy, is that a tough site right now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Well, remember I said, oh, why are you taking all that out? It's beautiful the way it is. Remember?
No. As for the, forget the necessarily who's constructing the trails, the specs on the trail, wasn't that, I thought that was maybe put on the selectmen at some point.
What's that?
The specs on the trail?
No, it's not up to them. I mean, that whole thing about the negotiation, that was a disaster to begin with, but they have to go by our specs.
Hey, I got two quick items before we leave I'd like to cover.
Do we still have agenda items?
We do.
No, we're all done with it.
This is new business.
Meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes.
Walter just proposed a lot. What should we communicate, well, should we communicate first with the Conservation Commission and get some feedback as to whether they would consent to putting a trail on their land? Because the Conservation Commission controls that whole Maple Forest, so that's question one. Question two, what should I communicate to Pulte?
Well, you could let them know that we will contact ConCon and ask whether they would consent to the construction of a trailer on the edge of the property. And that's where we would put it, it's right on the edge of the property, as long as they know which, where exactly that we're talking about. Because it was confusing to us, so it was confusing to them if they don't know. But we'll contact the Conservation Commission, ask if they will, if they would consider it.
I need planning classes, Michelle's teaching me.
But we have to let Pulte know that they have to construct it, it's part of their plan.
The two quick items that I have is, one, in the reading that I get every meeting, I got this letter which is addressed to the board, just for information, it refers to a piece of property owned by Jane and Paul Newton on Fruit Street that is being sold, it's a seven-acre piece of property. It's, the buyer is proposing to put, to use 1.26 acres for a residence and leave the rest in agricultural definition. This is part of the Jane and Paul farm that's up for sale. And this being Fruit Street, that being Cleveland Street, that's the designated area that, and they're apparently retaining ownership of this property here in the corner. It's one of three house lots, one, two, three, that they also own that I think are for sale separately. So, that sale is going through, if you haven't heard, the fellow who's buying this is a guy named...
This is where the regular farm is up here, right?
No, the regular farm's right over here.
Oh, so we're looking at this...
You can look at it any way you want.
Oh, okay, so this is, well, because I have to view it the way I know the property.
According to Steve.
Is it where you go for the you pick yourself?
Pardon me?
Yes.
It's where you go for the you pick yourself.
That's the farm, yes. That's not the area that they're selling, it's on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, are these the, are these the, the elevations?
Conceptuals.
So that's one item. Second item is, I move that we accept the minutes of meeting of the July 11th Planning Board meeting, that have been vetted by me.
July 15th.
July 15th, yes.
Second, that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have one quick question of new business. I apologize, I wasn't able to make Al's welding site meeting, and that I wasn't even able to get any comments to you.
Forgot to discuss it, yeah.
Because I was coming back from vacation and getting into work, I was crazy hectic, but I am curious to know how it went and...
Good question. I meant to talk about that, but the night was so busy that it just went out of my head. But the three of us went, and...
Four of us.
Oh, four of us, that's right, the four of us. And the, it's an interesting site.
It's confusing in the back.
Yeah, it's very confusing, it's a very confusing site.
No, no, glad you didn't go.
And what was brought up to him, and Peter, which Peter was pushing, is, why don't you just tear this down and put a house in here? You can make a lot more money doing that.
Which he almost was tempted to.
And we all went, that sounds like a great idea, but it turns out that the house next door and that lot, which has this commercial building on it, is one lot.
Right. Because we thought they might have been, because they're very old lots, that they might have been two separate lots, pre-existing, non-conforming.
You had to separate them?
And, no, there's not enough rentage, and so unfortunately, that isn't an option. But we almost had him going for it. I think he's in the middle of what? He's trying to sell the business, and the business who he thinks he's selling it to needs a home. So unfortunately...
It's not going to work out.
Al's welding will live.
Well, yeah, it's...
The landmark. You've given someone directions.
Maybe you could get him to the landmark.
A landmark all right.
Take the left at Al's welding, you know, depending on the direction of coming.
But it doesn't say Al's welding anymore.
No, he said the sign was stolen, I asked him.
Oh, really?
He showed up one Monday and the sign was gone.
But, I guess, he...
Could you then tear down the commercial thing?
I don't know. The, we did discuss the whole aspect about the parking, we told him that, you know, the access around the building, we could be a little bit more lenient with as far as what material is being used. But we have things apart, because it's in zoning, it has to be paved. And he was saying that, yeah, he'll probably end up paving it. But Tom's comment about the bioswale, we told him that that's probably the best approach to use, is that bioswale.
But there was one confusing item, because behind it, they have completely cleared out, which is, looks like multiple lots, and then we couldn't tell whether the stakes were actually property lines or demarking the nature trail or whatever.
Yeah, they read property line, it was written on it, but...
But, yeah, so I think it would be very helpful if he, to look at it in the future, if the trail itself, at least on the back of his property line, was marked, so we know how deep we're going in. But he was a very nice guy, he was open to any suggestion.
Much, the lot is not very deep, no, not deep at all.
Has he reached out to you at all, Tom, yet?
No.
I honestly don't think he knows really what to do there.
No, I think, in fact, I think we confused him really with anything.
Yeah, because he says, you know, I'm a short timer, you know, at most three to five years. He said, if I got a big contract tomorrow, I'd, you know, probably stay for another five, but he said, it doesn't look like I'm getting it, because all the Fed funds are driving.
Betsy, I got to approve these minutes.
A couple of major bridges are eating up all the federal funds.
The executive session?
He did show us what he does. He has these...
The executive session?
That's what they call Walter, the little metal things.
It's been on the agenda for months.
There were some sort of pins, they were about inch in diameter, inch and a quarter in diameter.
They were like rivets?
Yeah, they were like connectors that...
And he spots, well...
They're studs, they're studs.
Right, but how, and what was the wattage they hit him with?
Eighteen amps.
And they're like, they take this solid metal piece in the bridge, and it like, in less than a second...
It's like one and a half inch diameter, we're saying, up to, or something like that.
Two and a quarter, something like that, yeah.
He's got some heavy-duty equipment there.
Big, I mean, all, 90% of all the bridges in the big dig have them. And that he said, 94, 95, nope, he was doing a lot of work.
But all the money brought...
Ready for a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we are.
I move that we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now that everyone got a chance to listen to us.